Recording Josh. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is two oh two P M. And I will turn it over to Josh for a roll call.
Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Councilmember Denson?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lichten?
Here.
Councilmember Rottenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Starset?
Here.
And Councilmember Wook?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay. Um, we are going to adjourn into executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment. Per R C W four two dot three zero dot one zero zero parentheses one parentheses G. For, I'm gonna say fifteen minutes. Uh, no action will be taken following the executive session. Uh, the city clerk has just emailed out a link to council, so we will leave this meeting. Everyone else stay on this meeting, please, and then council, we will um go into the executive session link. And when we return, we'll log right back onto this link. So let Josh know if you have any questions or me, and I'll see you guys in there in just a second.
Do I have?
Because I think we're all. Good afternoon, we have returned from executive session. The time is two eighteen P M. And we will go right into our first discussion item, which is our U G A analysis. And I think Director Langholm is on the call.
Mayor, this is actually um community development.
Oh, I'm sorry, Katrina. I didn't mean to.
No worries. Yeah, I know you can. Give the introduction.
And I see Carla's here with us as well. Are you guys tag teaming on this one?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Today, we're pleased to present to you uh the draft City of Gig Harbor Urban Growth Area Analysis. With us today is Andrew Bjorn of Burke Consulting, who has been fantastic working with us on this important uh report. Um, just very briefly, U G A is urban growth area. And as you probably know from the uh from the report, and we do have a presentation that will break this down, but yeah, the urban growth area is um an unincorporated portion that surrounds the city. That is classified by urban growth and is managed by Pierce County and is subject to Pierce County rules and regulations. Per growth management, sorry, Andrew, from stealing your thunder, uh but but part of growth management is to have cities incorporate urban growth areas into their boundaries. And Public Works um already does a great job of uh servicing these areas in our treatment plant, for instance, is is sized appropriately. So we do coordinate in some manner, shape and form. There have not been significant annexations that have occurred over the past ten years, and they're um the county, as well as some of our citizens, are interested in having the city consider annexation now and into the future. So prior to our two thousand and twenty-four comprehensive plan, we thought it important and asked for funding through the budget to conduct this urban growth area analysis that would look at our break down our urban growth area into bite-sized pieces and be able to analyze that in terms of existing conditions of fiscal um needs for services if we were to take them into our city. And I think that you've probably seen a lot of the great fiscal work that was done by Burke and their subconsultants in order to provide information to the council. This is a really important report, not only in giving this uh the fiscal tax information, but also in helping us make future decisions about the size of our city. Um. Again, growth management does eventually want us to have all of the U G A into uh city limits and have the urban growth areas shrink in our city, become larger. And it really is incumbent upon the city to have a strategy and a set of policies in order to do that in a manner that is consistent with our vision for our city. And so this is really the first step in accomplishing that with the information in the report. And Andrew will go over a a high-level summary of that. But one of the more important parts within this are the set of um objective policy criteria that we're proposing for council adoption. And by that, I mean, if an annexation petition were to come in tomorrow and we have this report adopted, staff would be able to have the ten criteria and provide objective recommendations as to whether or not this particular annexation met the the policy criteria that was set forth by the policymakers you the council. That takes it um subjectivity or a personal um opinion out of those decisions, which really helps us in the public process. Um, and it will also be useful from a city perspective if there's targeted annexations that we as a city would like to um to go after, to take into the city. We will then have policies and objectives in order to accomplish that work. Um, and so before going into the presentation, again, thank you for having us this afternoon. We do not expect that this would be the only time council that we're here. So if there are a lot of questions, um, we would like to take those in and be able to respond back to you at the next council work session, which we are on your schedule to come back. So it's a lot of information and hope to give you an overview today. And with that, I will turn it over to Andrew and Carl, who have been the project managers of this. Thank you.
And before Andrew, really quick, before you jump in on the presentation here, I just wanted to um highlight a little bit about the process um that we've gone through and really give a big um shout out to uh our our planning commission uh who worked uh really hard on this document and provided um really a lot of feedback and really helped us hone this in. Um, asked a lot of great questions. Um, and we're really an integral part of this of this process. So the 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 report that Andrew's presenting to you today is the result of um of our work with the planning commission. Um, and again, I so I just wanted to make sure and give them a a big shout out for the for the work that they did on this. Um, and 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 Burke, as far as a consultant goes, has been fantastic as well. So we're really um, we're really proud to um to have this presented to you today. So with that, I'll turn this over to Andrew. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Carl. And no pressure. It's uh always good to always good to hear good stuff and uh hope that uh hope that the conversation is great today. So um, so uh I'm Andrew Bjorn. I'm a senior associate with Burke Consulting in Seattle, and uh we've been working with Carl and Katrina and other city staff on developing a report about the urban growth areas uh surrounding uh Gig Harbor. And I I'm just going to say upfront that uh if anybody has any questions, please, by all means, uh raise your hand. I'll uh I I have everybody front and center on my screen. I I I would like to get through the presentation and questions within an hour so that, you know, there's enough time for other elements of your meeting, but by all means, I have no problems if you need to interrupt or ask for clarifications or anything like that. So. Um. So what we're really intending to do with this presentation is is go through a few different points, just talking about the purposes, which Katrina has covered. Uh, I'll just uh reference it briefly. Uh, talking about the process, and again, uh Carl has referenced some pieces of that. I just want to kind of talk a little bit about that. But then we'll get into more of the report elements, so looking at the potential impacts of annexing uh the U G As in the future. Uh, what a potential review process for annexation applications would look like. Uh, how to coordinate a broader annexation strategy for the U G As in the future? And what could be potential next steps going forward for council in the city overall? So really, the the purpose of this report has been to provide long-term strategic advice to council. And it's mainly dealing with both uh individual annexation petitions that would come forward as well as just broader thinking about how the city should be thinking about annexations in the future. Uh, as Katrina had referenced, there are cases where we're going to be petitions that come in, but there are also opportunities that the city may have to be a little bit more proactive, especially with some recent changes in state legislation to what cities can do with annexation. As well, this report is also intended to provide a reference for future community discussions and decisions. And I'll get into this in a minute, but but we have had interactions with the planning commission in developing this. But those aren't all of the discussions with the community that will be necessary in the future. So this is really intended to provide a basis for a lot of those discussions and a starting point for a lot of those discussions. So in terms of the process that we went through um for our project, there there were a few refinements in our from our initial work plan. And as we were moving through this, our intent was to provide some information about the U G As upfront. And we'll we'll get into that section in a moment, just trying to summarize what the current conditions are. Get a financial analysis of what the impacts would be fiscally for the city with annexation. And then working on strategic development on the basis of that analysis. So looking at some of the some of the needs that these areas would have um some of the data gaps and in looking forward at how that would inform what the city could be doing in the future. So a lot of this was informed by review and discussion with the planning commission, as was mentioned, they were very helpful. Uh, it was it was great cooperating with them to refine a lot of the ideas we had had. We also did a lot of work with coordinating with uh certain members of city uh with city staff as well. And uh, we're at a point in the project process where we're reviewing this with you. Uh, we would appreciate your feedback on this and uh definitely want to make this a a positive uh uh a a positive product that represents your uh represents your perspectives as well. So in in looking at the U G As, uh, the classifications that we have here are as defined in the in the current version of COP Plan. And uh, we're looking at these discrete areas uh as, you know, their own locations, having different characteristics and having those characteristics affect how we look at uh how the city should approach annexation from each of these areas. So the main analysis that we were doing was looking at the fiscal impact. So taking a look at your budgets, taking a look at um at uh the revenue that you would receive and then the required investments and services that would be required for each of these locations. But we did also look at other impacts of annexation. Looking at, you know, capital investment, looking at um uh, looking at elements of environment protection and things like that. We, I I should state upfront that uh the scope of the work was to examine existing reports. We do make notes in here about areas where um there may be additional engineering studies that would be necessary and going forward. We we want to be clear that um, you know, there are some things that would require uh more detailed design work to get a better uh to get better scoping on. But we do want to provide an understanding about what some of those general costs would be in this report. So um, there are a lot of tables that we have, a lot of graphics. I'm gonna just point out, for example, that uh that um we do cover, for example, you know, what these areas are and how they compare to uh the existing city. One metric that we use is looking at the assessed value of land uh and property inside and outside the inside the U G As and inside of Gig Harbor proper, just to provide some comparisons of size and kind of the magnitude of um the full annexations, so giving an understanding about the amount of land. Uh, and uh, you know, we also have information about uh the population in these areas as well. Most of the areas are primarily residential. There are uh some areas that do have institutional uses, primarily the uh, you know, the uh, the schools in Purdy. The uh, the the prison to the west, but uh yeah, the most of these areas are residential. Uh, we do also take a look at the future development capacity. And as as Katrina was saying, ostensibly, one of the reasons to have urban growth areas is to have areas for the city to expand into. But in many communities across the state, development is always going on in urban growth areas. So we do want to acknowledge that there are some areas where there could be future growth with both housing and employment and and identify those. There are other cases, uh, Badrona Links to the uh Southeast is a great example of this where um at at this point, uh, with current zoning and current ownership, it's completely built out. Uh, there may be other reasons for, there may be future opportunities, but for the most part, uh, looking at annexation would be influenced by things other than accommodating future growth. And I will stop on occasion just to make sure that nobody is waving their hands loudly, trying to get my attention. So um so um one other thing to note here is that um the developable land that is in the is currently in the U G As may be impacted by the needs for stormwater sewer infrastructure and uh current zoning. So in the report, we do evaluate what the current development capacity is. Um, one thing to note is that that could change if annexed into the city and the zoning uh, the zoning and planning were to be changed. Uh, we do want to state that upfront, just that those are a lot of the assumptions that we're making. If there is annexation and um areas are uh zoned differently, there may be um, there may be changes to that. But we were just considering things under their current uh county zoning designation and assuming that it would transition over to the city uh with similar densities. So when we were going through and evaluating, you know, if we're bringing these areas into the city, if if they're coming in in turn with annexation, you know, what the effects would be. Um, we evaluated a lot of different potential sources of revenue. The the primary one and and the one that pretty much dominates all of the others is with property taxes is looking at ad valorem property taxes as they apply primarily to residential real estate. There are some examples, there there are some small examples primarily in Purdy of um of some commercial real estate, but uh uh residential real estate is primarily the source of that. Uh, there are other sources, including sales taxes and utility taxes and and other charges that uh we've noted as part of your budget to be complete. Uh, but they form a a lesser percentage of what uh the city would likely get as revenue from these areas. We also did uh take a look at uh the expenditures as well. So looking at uh and it looking primarily at the main things that would be involved with um integrating new areas into the city. So um, some of the areas that were calculated differently were with uh city streets. So we were evaluating that on the basis of the amount of roadway that was that would be incorporated into the city that the city would need to take care of. Um, we did make a cursory evaluation of changes to police protection that would be required. That was something that we consulted with the police chief about. Uh, he did mention that there was uh uh that they were looking forward to a uh a more detailed uh study of police protection services. I I can't necessarily speak to that, but I know that that information may change in the future. And with a lot of the other municipal expenditures, with looking at city staff, with looking at um you know, operating the library, uh, not the library, operating uh, operating community development services, operating a lot of um a lot of other types of infrastructure, sewer infrastructure for as well, not sewer infrastructure, but um a lot of other types of services that the city would provide. Um, this is something that we had based on a per capita basis in terms of both of uh uh employment and on local residents. So we did want to kind of scale it on that basis. It is uh, it is somewhat at a high level, but this is something that works to just try to evaluate as the city grows, how many more staff would you need to hire? Uh, what would their expenditures be to provide the same level of services over time? So as Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
No worries. Thank you so much, Andrew. I had some questions about the expenditure and and you kind of brought it up. Um, why wouldn't sewer be in and water, for that matter, be included in projected costs? Because I would think that would be a huge expenditure um in some of these areas. And I'm thinking Canterwood in particular, because that has come up before um with their interest in being annexed. And then my my second question is whether you discuss any of this with our local fire department? Because, you know, different densities is going to impact their level of service as well, even though they're not under the city.
Okay, um, so I'll get the easier question out of the way first and then get to the harder one. So with respect to fire protection, because everything is covered under the same fire district, we're assuming that there's no net impact. Uh, because the city doesn't run it and because nothing is really going to change in terms of where they provide services. Um, uh, where we just assume that that would be a net um, a net that there would be no net change for the city itself. Um, with respect to sewer, this is an interesting one, because typically that would be, you're you're absolutely right with a lot of uh studies like this, sewer and water infrastructure extensions and increases in service costs would be a very big element of that. Um, however, the city already provides sewer services to the U G As. So included under the COP Plan, uh included under the municipal code, sorry, is a specific provision that um that the U G As also are sewer servicing areas. So a lot of these areas are currently being serviced by the city anyway. Um, there are areas that will require sewer extensions, uh Canterwood and Reed Road being examples of that. In cases like that, the primary driver for increases in cost will be uh will be with respect to uh capital that infrastructure. And this is something where uh I'll get into this in a minute, but we do acknowledge that at a high level. The issue is more that we can't put a fixed number on that right now. Uh, there are no sources that we could draw upon to get a a high-level cost for that. And even if we were to provide one, it would likely change on the basis of further further work. Um, especially depending on the the uh the final policies that would come out. So we did, we did take that into account. Um, and we do have, we did have that in mind going through.
I believe the Public Works Director wants to comment on that.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Thank you, Andrew. I just wanted to remind council that at this point, the city requires any extensions for connecting to sewer to be paid for by developers. So the upfront capital costs are typically, no, not always, uh paid for by the developer. So would not be an added burden to the city. It would only be added for the maintenance costs, which our monthly rates are supposed to cover. So uh, we would just estimate, calculate those changes as necessary with our uh utility rate studies. Um, now specifically as for water, the entire Gig Harbor Peninsula is essentially divided up for being serviced by different water purveyors. And in the area in and around uh the northern side of the city, it's it's already decided who's providing water to which residents. Um, and essentially just north of the hospital is where our water service ends. To the north and the west is Washington Water, and Canterwood itself is already being served by Canterwood Water System. So we there there would be no change regardless of whether or not that area is located in city limits or in the urban growth area.
But Jeff, isn't it true that those areas that are not within the city that we are providing service to is paying a higher regular monthly rates? And wouldn't those go down upon annexation?
You're absolutely right. So it it they're paying anywhere that's currently being served by city sewer but is in the urban growth area is paying fifty percent above the in-city rate, one point five percent or one hundred and fifty percent. So um, yes, if they were, once they were annexed, that would be reduced down to uh one hundred percent, the standard rate for in-city residents.
And for all the properties that we serve outside of the city, how much of an impact would that be? If all of a sudden, all of them were annexed into the city, what would the rate impact be?
Um, we'd have to do the part of a de- pretty detailed study to see what that rate impact would be. There there is a decent amount of rates that are collected from the U G A now. It would have an impact on the overall city in-city resident rate. It would be affected by that and it would go up. How much? I don't know.
And Tony and Jeff, that would be evaluated upon petition for annexation. That that data would be provided as part of the packet for consideration.
And and we may have some of that data already coming our way, just as an aside, with the utility rate study that we have going on right now. Ashley is our consultant. Ashley Emery is very aware of uh how much uh fees we collect both in-city and in U G A. Thanks.
Katrina, did you want me to call on race hands or did you want to do that?
I'm happy to do that, or um, or I can defer to you.
Um, it's fine. I can see them all clearly, so it's okay. If you'd like me to do that, that's that's great. Um, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. So uh, just as a note for the U G areas like Reed Road and Canterwood that are already built out. Um, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, you might know this better, that any extension of sewer lines to serve that area would be on the city, not on them, because it's not like a brand-new development. I'm assuming that the Reed Road area, um, they needed new lift stations, according to the uh report. And those would also be at the cost of the city, because it's not a newly developed area that we could say, okay, Mister or Miss Developer, you need to pay for it.
Uh, no, typically, the it's it's not that way, Councilmember Henderson, actually. And I'll give you a quick example, on Reed Road, uh, south of where Lift Station Nine is currently located and the uh recent Cushman is it Cushman Point Plant? Is that what it's called just south of the state on Reed Road? Um, is a um apartment complex. That apartment complex is located in the urban growth area. Um, however, that apartment complex has more than enough land to double in size, but the undeveloped areas currently they're drained from. If they were to connect to city sewer, they they would be the ones to that would have to remove lift station. Well, we do it in order, they would have to build a new lift station nine further down in the basin, because lift station and sewer basin number nine actually flows much further south. Uh, so that that complex could flow by gravity to the new lift station. And then they would um remove the existing lift station number nine, and that cost typically has been. And the we would continue to recommend that it be put on the developer to pay for those capital costs.
Okay, so in the case of Canterwood, would connection cost then be on each one of the residents or would that be on the city?
Well, that would be, again, staff would be recommending we continue with the same policy, it'd be on the residents. Uh, Canterwood's a little different. They have a step system and not a gravity sewer flow. Um, and so we we haven't looked into how we would best serve Canterwood with sewer if all of Canterwood wanted to connect to sewer. Some of Canterwood is connected via step, step is septic tank effluent pump. So it just takes the effluent from your septic tank and pumps it to our system. Um, we staff are recommending we don't allow any new step systems, because they're very corrosive to our equipment and infrastructure. Um, but uh, we would have to do a detailed analysis of what it would look like to sewer all of Canterwood, not just the area that we're currently serving with the step system.
Thanks.
Um, Mayor, I would just like to do a time check. I know there's three items behind us, and we're at two forty-six right now. I'd want to be respectful of the council's time. Um, and Andrew, how many slides left do we have?
Um, a fair bit, but there there are some that I can skip to get to the good stuff, so.
Okay, Councilmember Denson, did you have a relatively quick question or are you able to?
I think that Councilmember Henderson was getting at my question, um, but I would like to explore this further in the future, just to make sure I'm clear, but we can move on. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I'm going to talk a bit about the uh about the regular fiscal impacts on a yearly basis. Um, I I think that I I think that we've explored a lot. I, I think that, I, I think that we've explored a lot of the infrastructure questions, a lot of the infrastructure cost questions. So I'll, I'll talk about this and then hit on the guidelines and on some of our recommendations for strategy. One of the things that we did, like I said here, was to take a look at what the yearly effects would be. And this is, this is something to note here because there are some areas where you're getting, you would be getting a fair amount of a fair amount of revenue from property taxes. Property in Canterwood is valued very high. And there are other areas where the, the, the cost that would be necessary to incorporate to, to service an area would be pretty considerable. So in particular, in looking at areas like, like Purdy, for example, stands out as being one of the biggest, in part because servicing would be required, would be would need to take into consideration the institutional uses there. But there's no kind of property taxes that the school would be paying for that. So this, this does kind of provide a perspective on that. The, the fiscal, the yearly fiscal impact should not be the only determining factor for annexation. But it should be, it should be one consideration in going forward, especially in planning how to, how to accommodate future growth, future annexation in terms of budgets. So we did do an, an analysis just of what it would look like if these areas were to be annexed today. And then we also took a look at, you know, if we did this at build-out, if all of the properties were identified as developable under the, under the build of the lands, reporting were built out to current to, to current development capacity, what would it look like? And there are some areas where we know where it does change, where it does, where it does improve significantly. So, but again, like the, 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 these are intended to bracket what we would expect the, the yearly fiscal impacts to be at a, at a certain point in time on annexation.
Andrew, we have a question from Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, I, if yearly physical impacts are certainly a big part of deciding on annexation or not. I'm interested in the margin of error you may have here with saying that one is going to have a net $6,000 in a year. It's, it's like you send four guys out to patch a pothole and there goes your $6,000. So I'm, I'm curious how you came to be so accurate.
So what, what I would say is that the, we're, we're intentionally kind of trying to not portray this as being accurate down to the, the Nats eyebrow to, to use a metaphor here. This is intended to give a general impression. We're not stating that it will, it will absolutely be 18,000. In a lot of cases, when we were evaluating the incremental costs for hiring, for example, we weren't looking at, you know, whether you, like, how, how many individual people you would need to hire to annex the Burnham Drive area. We were looking at kind of that marginal cost. So in some cases, you could probably incorporate small areas without really any effect at all. And, you know, if there are no police calls out to the four properties of Burnham Drive, if you don't need to patch any potholes out there, it could be, could be higher than that. If the police get called a little bit more than expected, if, you know, you need to, you need to do extra maintenance on the roads, it could be, it could be lower. This is just intended to give a, a general impression of like that expectation, not the actual amount. Okay. So one of the things we looked to develop as part of this were just a set of 10 annexation guidelines. So in, in taking a lot of the analytical work, we wanted to develop these systematic and consistent points to look at whenever an, an annexation petition would come in. Or if, if an annexation were to be pursued by a city, by the city for some reason. And there are a number of questions to think about with those, like with a petition, whether it should be accepted or changed. If there are any conditions that would be required, if it's something that the city would pursue, you know, are there any, you know, extenuating circumstances or additional planning that the city would need to do before going forward? And we, we do have a list of 10 points here. I'll read them out really quickly here. You know, obviously annexations need to be consistent with comprehensive plan. And as well, it's, it is important that it should be supported by the, the folks that should be impacted, primarily residents, property owners in an area. Ensuring that there is a net positive fiscal impact to the city, as we have noted before. It's not going to be the case in, in every situation. But if it is, if it does provide a net positive fiscal impact, that should be considered in the decision-making. We wanted to identify with points four and five that with larger annexations, that may take a lot of coordination. And it may be best to stage larger annexations to allow the city time and opportunities for proper planning. On the other hand, there is a fixed cost associated with annexation. So ensuring that we can reduce the number of annexations, that we're not doing it two or three properties at a time, that could be pretty, that could be pretty important. In terms of maintaining or creating logical boundaries for the city, you know, having really unusual pockets or, you know, little peninsulas that stick out into Pierce County can impact service delivery. So ensuring that, you know, the, the, the boundaries follow roads, follow natural features can be important. And if we're, if, if areas are to be annexed, there should be a reason to incorporate them into the city. They should be at urban densities. Annexing areas that will never develop into, into more urban areas just does not make sense. There is also the idea that, you know, city planning and zoning could provide better, better outcomes for future development, better environmental protection and management. And obviously, there are always other cases that come up where, or other public benefits or other concerns that may arise that would be associated with annexation that could, that should be examined. But what we're trying to do with these is to provide a list that people can work through to understand whether or not an annexation would be a benefit for the folks living within an area and for the city overall. So.
Councilmember Denson?
Yeah, just want, this is a great list. I just want to make a quick, um, quick comment that would fall under a couple of these that it would be, I think, good to consider proximity to transit and to Highway 16. It kind of goes along with your environmental points and public benefits and some of the work we're doing in terms of, um, well, increasing density within the city, not, not sprawling and maybe finding some, some areas for some more affordable housing.
Yeah, and, and I think, I, I don't, I don't want to give the impression that these questions can't incorporate any of that. We wanted to make sure that they were high level enough so that people could go through and look at them. But absolutely, like, especially with respect to point, point seven and eight with increasing urban density. Like that would, that would absolutely go along with that, but.
I guess, Tony.
Yeah, I want to go back to the revenue calculations and specifically talk about sales tax. You don't have to go back, I'll go backwards. I just, I just want to make a comment. The estimation of sales tax generating, generated revenue was based upon just square footage of commercial space and restaurant space, correct?
Yes, and I think I know where you're going, but yep.
What about internet home sales?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a phenomenon that's, that's coming up more and more. The, the issue that we have with it is that it is very hard to disentangle where those sales taxes come in versus what is being charged with commercial square footage. And what we're looking at primarily with that is, you know, where, where we evaluated. I mean, the main methodology that we had was that we were looking at the square footage of commercial uses identified with Department of Revenue category, like a industry categories essentially, and trying to map out where that square footage would fit. You're absolutely right that over time, as we shop for more and more things online, more and more of the sales taxes will be coming just from point of sale with residential home locations, and it is coming up. So you are right with that, but even with that, the commercial areas like the, you know, the, the you know, the power centers that are in Gig Harbor are still going to be providing a, a, a significant proportion of the, of the sales taxes and including an extra, you know, 500 homes will, will increase that amount, but probably not as much as what commercial development, what additional commercial development.
So I just wanted to throw that on the table.
Yep, and I'm not trying to dodge the question. I think that this is something that we're trying to struggle with too and exactly how to map that out. But at this point, at this point, it's still not to the level where we want to, you know, where we want to try to drill down into that, especially when property taxes are far higher of an impact.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Denson, did you still have a question?
I'm sorry.
No, no worries. I, Councilmember Henderson.
And just a quick question. I, I thought I heard you said that in the guidelines, we wouldn't necessarily want to annex any property that couldn't be developed. With the city's recent prioritization of climate change and urban forests, places like McCormick Forest might be a good annexation because if it's, I understand it belongs to PennMet Parks. But we have areas that the county could develop that we'd lose as far as urban forest or whatever. So I, I'm not sure how we integrate that into this guideline of saying if it can't be developed, we shouldn't be annexing.
Well, that with, I'll, I'll, I'll cover, I'll cover McCormick, McCormick Park in a minute.
Okay.
In fact, what I would say though is something else that we consider. I mean, the PennMet parks are actually something that we factored into some of the strategic advice that we'll get into in a minute. But the thing that we wanted to establish is that there are some things that we're assuming won't change. That PennMed is going to maintain their ownership and management of the parks that are currently adjacent to Big Harbor. And we're just assuming that they're going to carry on with that into the future. If, if those change, if for some reason, they decide for some reason to sell McCormick Park for development, I don't think that that would come up, but I have no idea. I, I, I'm not privy to those decisions. That may be a case where our recommendations would change. But if it's, if it's going to stay in its current form, whether it's managed by the city or managed by PennMed, it's going to hit this, it would likely hit the same environmental goals, we're assuming.
Andrew, if I may, Councilmember Henderson, your question is good. This is something that the Planning Commission wrestled with a lot, in particular regarding ability to densify further and tree canopy in particular. And one of the way, one of the ways that they were coming at this is that an annexation would be more palatable, if you will, to the city and our residents if the land that we were annexing look and felt like Gig Harbor. For instance, where we, I mean, it may not be perfect, but on our plots, we have buffers that surround them. Whereas on the county plots right now, they don't have the open space exterior perimeter buffers that we currently require. And so this kind of gets into the, the dance, if you will, between city and county and making things, you know, a priority for annexation. And tree canopy, the Planning Commission thought was very important and would make something be more Gig Harbor-esque. In regard to the Madrona Links Golf Course and the PennMet Park off of Bousage, as Andrew said, it's an important consideration to look at development potential for those properties. They're very large undeveloped properties right now. And yes, we know that they are currently owned and managed by the PennMed District. However, it's not unheard of for properties to be sold and developed in order to gain capital funding for another venture. And so that is something that we wanted to consider in this analysis is if, I mean, golf courses are being converted to homes a lot across the country, for instance. So if PennMed sold Madrona Links, would the city be okay with having a, a plot come in? Is that something we would want? If we pulled these out of the urban growth area, their zoning would be at maximum one unit per five acres. And so that density and the impact to the city would be much less than if it was in the urban growth area that would require a minimum density currently in Pierce County of four units per acre. And so that's the kind of the consideration, I think Andrew's going to get there, of why we specifically called out those large park swaths.
I just worry about the speed at which the city could pivot and annex something if we found out that PennMet Parks wanted to get rid of McCormick Forest just because they needed additional money for something else. I, I would hate to lose that opportunity because we couldn't move fast enough because government moves slowly. We all know that.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah, and I, I mean, our, our assumption is that McCormick is, is pretty, is going to be pretty static. But like what Katrina was saying, you know, golf courses, you know, there have been golf courses in Bothell and Pacific, for example, that have shut down. And, and if something like that were to happen in Madrona Links with PennMed, that, you know, that is, that is a prime opportunity. One of the reasons why urban growth areas exist, accommodating, you know, better, better planning and better development by incorporating it into the city would be perfect. But I'm getting ahead of myself and I, I want to get through a few things really quickly so that there's a little bit more time for discussion. So we do have those 10 kind of principles to think about when evaluating annexation petitions and annexation actions. But we also wanted to provide a broader strategy. So looking at with the given UGAs that exist, how should the city approach them? And we have kind of five points. The first one is kind of renamed a little bit from the report. But we're looking at areas to be considered for just removal from UGAs. Areas that are more kind of long-term, uh, the long-term management areas, areas that would be managed more by local petition, areas for planned, the planned annexation over time, and then areas for the city to take action. So as I said, I'll go through these quickly, but we can, we can discuss certain ones in more detail. With, with McCormick Park, that's an area, as I said, where there's no current long-term potential for additional development. That could change based on PennNet policy, but if it's maintained in the long term, there's no reason to keep it within a UGA. It's not a growth area. It's not accommodating additional growth at any point. If this is the case where council believes that there is a possibility that it could be, that they could be trying to dispose of the site sometime in the future, by all means, keep it in the, keep it in the UGA. But in other cases, you know, just representing it accurately that, you know, this area will likely never be included within the city. That's a recommendation that we're just making here. There are other areas where there are institutions, there are primarily institutional uses that aren't going to be paying taxes to the city. The prison, the schools in Purdy, the PennMed Golf Course in Madrona Links. And while there are, while there are some residential and commercial uses in these places, especially in Purdy and Madrona Links, they're not well-connected with the surrounding neighborhoods. So, and, and there is minimal capacity for future development. Purdy is more limited by existing infrastructure that we need to be improved to get more development capacity. But Madrona Links is completed, it looks like it's completely built out under current zoning. So as it is, because there is a consideration in the code that urban growth areas provide for sewer servicing for the city, we would recommend that these areas be kept within the city, within the UGA rather, but that these are viewed more as long-term considerations, that it's that they're not viewed as short-term or moderate-term annexation opportunities. There are also areas that are smaller where the amount of time that would take for the city to work to coordinate annexation may just be not quite worth it in the short term. That there isn't necessarily a requirement for additional planning or coordination, but local landowners may look to petition to be annexed within the city. So our recommendation for these areas is that it's more of a wait-and-see approach. Talk to the landowners, conduct outreach, but have to conduct annexation more on the schedule of the landowners in these areas. On the other hand, there are larger areas with Canterwood, Peacock Hill, and then with Reeve Road that are larger, that would be more difficult to annex through individual piecemeal annexation petitions. In addition, because of a lot of the infrastructure requirements, that may require more significant costs and additional planning and studies. So there is a provision in the state statute for annexation that allows for negotiation with Pierce County through an interlocal agreement that would incorporate a public engagement process that would include the residents and landowners of these areas and would involve more detailed planning, potentially engineering studies as well, just to confirm the amount of, just to confirm what would be required to incorporate them. And then that can include phased plan, phased annexations as well. So if certain areas are too large to take in all at once, it can be done over time to ensure that the city has the opportunity to plan these annexations out properly. And then finally, there are certain areas where there are small areas that, you know, have a very limited number of residents. It represents areas where the city boundaries are unusual and not regular. Where it may just make sense for the city to take the lead and annex these through more streamlined processes that are available in the state statute. And this would not be without consultation of the folks living in these areas, owning property in these areas, just more that it, it would be streamlined such that the administrative cost would be lower than if it were held through a standard kind of annexation petition. So this is just intended more as a systematic way of approaching annexation. So instead of looking at all of these areas equally, recognizing that an annexation application that would come in from Purdy should be recognized differently than one that would come in from Point Fostic, for example. So I will just also say these designations can change. Again, if Pennant is looking to change the use of the Madrona Links Golf Course, that would definitely change that from a, from a gray to probably a red or, or a blue or would, would at the very least require some additional review to understand if the city would prioritize annexation for that area. But over time, what would be useful is, you know, these are the kinds of policies, the kinds of ideas to be incorporated within the, you know, as the comp plan is being updated, to provide more guidance about what council and what community sees as the future for these areas. And at this point, there are some policies that are in there, but I think that providing a little bit more certainty for the folks that live in these areas can be important. There is also a note, there are policies that are currently in the, in the comp plan, I believe, that do make a note about integrating private water developers into the, into the city system. It's something that we've made a note of just in terms of annexation. It's not something that we've examined in detail as, as Jeff was saying, this is something that isn't really going to, you know, it, these areas are already being serviced. We're not considering these as part of the cost that would be expected, but it is something to consider over time because it's currently in city policy. So.
I believe councilmember Denson had a question and I have a question as well.
Yeah.
Just, just a quick one. When you were looking at these properties and categorizing them, did you take into account, I know we don't have traffic studies, but traffic congestion, traffic flow, certain, certain of these areas already have a lot of congestion. So did you kind of think through that in terms of where we wanted to add people and density?
Yeah, so the primary, the primary element that we took a look at was the was the capital facilities planning for Pierce County for some of the, some of the areas in and around the UGAs. So we didn't necessarily go through, and again, we were, we're, we're, we were working off of the resources or the resources in the reports that were currently available. So in terms of looking at precise traffic counts or the impacts of future growth, we weren't necessarily, you know, doing any kind of scenario development. We did want to acknowledge, for example, that there are some, you know, there are some transportation needs that are in certain places that the city would, that the city may need to take on if they were to annex certain areas, so.
My, my question is, and I'm assuming it's the little blue areas, when you talk about a city-led process, you mentioned coordinating and talking to, getting input from the people that do own property or live in those areas. But are you ultimately talking about annexation through a interlocal agreement with the county?
Not with those areas. So there, there are essentially, there are a lot of different ways to annex property into the city, but generally, there are three different categories that you can approach, like the, the, the really detailed planning work with an interlocal agreement, the standard petition. But then there are also streamlined processes. So in areas like with Burnham Drive that are almost completely surrounded by the city, it's recognized that that's not an ideal configuration. So there are, there are quicker steps to, to, that you can work through that don't necessarily require the same, that don't necessarily require going to everybody to get signatures. You know, it's something that could be led by the city in a quicker timeframe.
You're talking about the land value petition method?
No, this is, this is, there's a, there's a separate streamline. There, so there's the, so the petition, it's complicated because there, there, there are like eight or nine different approaches, not all of them.
Okay, I, I just haven't been part of a annexation process for 20 years. I'm assuming things have changed a little bit.
Yeah, they did, they did, they have looked recently to streamline some of the elements, but you know, to go to three out of four people in Burnham Drive and say, you know, can we get your signature on this? You know, you could do that, but it's, there's a little bit more of an administrative process that you could follow. Okay, I'm not saying that this is something that the city needs to do, especially if there, if you, if everybody is resistant to it. But, you know, it's just an easier approach.
Understood.
Hey, I just wanted to mention that from a Pierce County perspective, when we've been coordinating with them, they're very interested in the city in the short term. So within the next two years, taking over Burnham Drive, the Peacock Hill, the small, not, they're not necessarily talking about the Masonic Lodge that we have Peacock Hill here, but the other little portion, and then the portion that is listed as Scansy Drive. Those are the annexation areas that they have interest in us taking over in the short term. And then we have beginning to an agreement of this annexation study and further consideration through the comp plan for the rest of the areas. So wanted to make sure that council knew that Pierce County was, again, wishing for us to take Burnham Drive, that smaller Peacock Hill property, and then Scansy Drive.
Can I ask, sorry, why Director Knutson, did they want us to take?
Great question. The most straightforward answer is provision of service, especially for the Burnham Drive property. It's bordered by Highway 16 and the city on three sides. And so if the building inspector, for instance, is going to go out to that Burnham Drive property where Rush currently has a plat under review, preliminary plat under review, they have to drive through the entire city to get to their little spot parcel of unincorporated Pierce County, similar to the Peacock Hill area, Scansy Drive, similar reason the city is surrounding those properties on most sites and it's for that and then provision of public services.
And I, I, I should note too that in our conversations with the police chief, he did note that in cases where they're responding in certain areas that may be little exclaves of, of Pierce County. It's often that they, that they do, like, they, they conduct kind of mutual assistance, mutual aid calls with, with the Pierce County Sheriff for areas that are isolated. So there are cases right now where there are some areas that may be effectively serviced by Gig Harbor just because it's difficult for Pierce County to service them.
Councilmember Luke.
Yes, thank you. The Scansy Drive, is that the area we were looking at annexing a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands, Andrew.
Okay. So I, it'd be great, you know, by all means, if there's any other feedback, you know, certainly happy to look to incorporate it. Hearing what you've been saying has been great. There are a few things that we might look to make final updates on before providing the final report. But yeah, Katrina, do you, or Carl, do you want to say anything to close everything out or?
Do you have the final slide of the next step?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So.
There we go.
One other thing to note here before we conclude is that the, the public engagement that we have conducted is primarily through Planning Commission, but that is not going to be the full extent of what would be required. There are other elements to that process that would be necessary. As we were talking about before with the interlocal agreements, that would require some element of public engagement, but also, you know, going out to the community as part of the discussions for the comp plan and, you know, discussions about other elements of this. As mentioned before, there are additional studies that could also be used to kind of supplement what we've provided here. Additional studies for engineering and for police services. What, I'll, I'll, I'll have Katrina speak to this in a little bit more depth, but ostensibly what would be good is to get approval of this, but I'll, I'll defer to Katrina on that, but, but this is something that can be incorporated into future land use policy. So the comp plan updates that are due in 2024, this is something that would likely be, would hopefully be incorporated in a lot of those discussions.
Thanks, Andrew. Council, the, the UGA analysis, it would not need to be adopted by ordinance at this time because it's not going into code or the comprehensive plan. However, we are recommending that this go forward to a council meeting, receive public comment, it's not required for a public hearing, and then adopt by resolution as city policy. And what that would allow us to do prior to fully incorporating it into the 2024 comprehensive plan update is to, it would, it will provide us with formal direction from council regarding annexations in our conversations with Pierce County. It will also provide us policy guidance, firm policy guidance, and how to bring something forward if we were to receive a petition, for instance, from a neighborhood, it would give us something to analyze against in the meantime. That being said, the, the policies that are within this document and how we've laid it out, we do anticipate incorporating that fully into the comprehensive plan, in particular, the land use chapter, and then into the municipal code through the comp plan process.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I am understanding what we're approving are the, the guidelines and the strategy that would go into future annexations. We're not approving that we would annex these properties in this manner. We're just, we're just looking at those properties and looking at their characteristics and agreeing that, for instance, the 10 guidelines are what we would use in the future to, to analyze requests and to create a plan. Am I correct?
That's correct. And so within the document, we've taken care to not tie us into anything, right? I mean, the fiscal analysis that has been done is great, but we know that that's going to change as land changes. The, the general, what, what council would do would be adopt the document. So kind of the snapshot in time that this is the fiscal analysis, these, these are what the UGAs are currently, and these are the policies. And we, we can craft that into the resolution, but in no way will be binding that we must do this and we must do this within a certain time. We've been very careful to craft that so that it's a general policy guidance, but a non-binding document.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
It will, however, become more binding once it gets incorporated into the comp plan in a few years, but for now, this would just provide us with the general guidance of how to move forward with this.
Councilmember Luke.
Yes, so councilmember Denson brought up the subject of traffic. And I think it is important in here to put in here somewhere, traffic and to reassess our annexation needs and, and one of those, one of those issues that needs to be looked at is traffic. And so she brought that up. I'd like to give her thank you and, and like to see this incorporated in here somewhere.
Thank you, councilmember. I think between now and the time that we meet next, there's a couple of comments and questions the council has. And we'd like to go back and think about how we can incorporate them into the draft. I think in regard to traffic, I, I don't have the list of 10 in front of me right now, but that would be something regarding capacity, development capacity, because there's some areas like Canterwood that are largely built out that would not have an impact per se on our transportation network because it wouldn't be adding units. But I do think that it, it, it may provide useful information that if we're annexing an area that has swaths of, large swaths of undeveloped land, that that could be a transportation impact and that we would need to analyze that further. So we'll, we'll consider how to potentially amend this and bring that back at our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So in the next steps, what is the ideal timeline that you're looking at, Katrina?
Ideally, we would like to have this adopted by the end of April.
Okay.
We have Burke on contract, I believe, through the end of April, although, you know, I think that they've tied it up with enough of a bow that we could carry it now. But that would be ideal in order for us to move forward on to the other priorities that council has for us this year.
Okay, and this, it sounds like what the resolution would become a working document, something to give you all guidance so you know how to deal with this moving forward before the comp plan in 2024. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions? Councilmember Den, or Henderson, I think. No, Denson, you beat him by a half a second.
Well, I don't even know what I want to say. There's just, I guess I need to do some more thinking about this and maybe talking to Director Knutson and Director Langhelm. It just makes me, the map showing on the planet potential annexation areas, I don't know, it just makes me a little, little uncomfortable because of discussions that we've had in the past about annexations and the pros and cons and all the things you need to consider. And you all know those things better than, better than me. And I'm thinking septic and I'm thinking traffic. There are some areas where like councilmember Luke referred to, there, there doesn't seem to be any capacity for increasing roads, so. like Councilmember referred to, there there doesn't seem to be any capacity for increasing roads. So I think we need to take that into consideration and and laying it out like this, and maybe this is the way we need to do it, but laying it out like this, like definitely says to me that there is a priority to move ahead with the areas that are kind of in the mauve or pink. And I don't know, I just need to do a little bit more thinking on it. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, we definitely appreciate the the thoughts from council, and I think that's important of why we're presenting it to you, right? You know, it's gone through staff and planning commission, but you know, if we can amend the document to you know, to meet the policy needs of the council, that's our goal. And I'm happy to, and I believe that Director Langholm would be happy to have that discussion with you as well.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my kind of comment too, is hopefully we can maybe have a few meetings with the Director Langholm or Knutson to go through some of this, some of our concerns about this, but I think it's a good step. I think it's necessary to get some some bookends on what we have to do. Just I think Robin and I and some others have some issues, or not issues, but concerns about new things. So, all right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Katrina, did you have anything else or Andrew, anything else to close this item?
Mayor, I think we've heard a couple of questions and some comments, a few of them that we will research and consider how to incorporate into the plan and bring that back when we're scheduled to be with you next.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Andrew, for being here with us this afternoon. Really appreciate your report and we hope that you have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our second item, which is our 2021 annual impact fee report. And this will be Director Langholm.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. I did provide a quick memo and a copy of the draft reports to you as part of the packet. I do want to back up. Received a couple of questions on impact fees in general. So thank you for asking those questions. I'm going to give just a quick summary on impact fees and then we'll dive in after that and quickly review the reports themselves. I hope this won't take long, but want to make sure that questions are answered. So as as you read through these documents, chapter nineteen twelve of municipal code does require the city to collect three separate impact fees, transportation, park and school impact fees. Yaccarver Municipal Code also identifies how the fees are adjusted. What they pay for and that the city must also provide annual reporting. So I wanted to go through each of those impact fees and what we do with each of them. But first, I want to say transportation and parks, those go into, those those are collected by the city and go into city funds. The school impact fee, as you probably read, is collected by the city, but distributed to the peninsula school district for them to spend on their capital project. So I'll start off with transportation. Transportation impact fees, that was the original rate on that impact fee was adopted by ordinance fourteen oh one in December of twenty eighteen. That fee is now automatically adjusted on January first of each year by staff. And that fee is adjusted based on the running average of the federal highways national construction cost index. It's a it's a price index for construction across the the nation. Park impact fees were established originally within ordinance eight one eight eight eighteen back in nineteen ninety nine. That's when impact fees were originally established. It has not been adjusted since. And does not have an automatic adjustment factor to it. The city has considered adjusting the park impact fee multiple times since nineteen ninety nine. But has not yet completed the process. There's a number of reasons why we got into it and said, yeah, this might not be the right time to adjust the impact fees. One of the reasons was because we needed a more current parks recreation open space plan. Well, now we have one, so might be the time to reassess and look at what our park impact fee is, but that same fifteen hundred dollar rate has been the same since nineteen ninety nine. School impact fees. So these were established as part of ordinance nine sixty three. That was in two thousand four. And there was an understanding that in the in the original agreement with the city and in that ordinance, that the city would collect those fees and shoot at them to the school district on a regular basis. So we're essentially just the collector and passing it through. School impact fees are automatically adjusted each year. We did that, added that to the code when it was last updated. So each year on April first, based on the consumer price index that is collected by the federal government for our region. We adjust the school impact fees. And we do have to spend those, all of those impact fees within ten years of collecting the fee itself. I can say that we easily meet that requirement. Because the first money's in is the first monies that go out. So if we collect a dollar today. Or it to be at the beginning of when we when we when we first collected the impact fees, that money, that one dollar went out to the very first project that came in. So we just continually roll it over and roll it forward. All right, so before I jump into the actual reports, are there any general questions on impact fees? Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. What what might it take then to perhaps start looking at revising the park impact fees with a brand new pros plan out and approved? Be a good idea.
Yes, I I can see why that would be a good a good project to go after. I think that it would be best served by either amending the budget or for the twenty twenty two budget or including it in the twenty twenty three budget, working with Matthew on that project. All right, there's no other questions. I'm going to just go through and bring up quickly the reports themselves and see if there's any questions on each individual report. So I'm going to start sharing my screen. I'm going to start with transportation and we're going to look at table one and table two. Okay, hopefully you can now see my screen. So there's a just a quick summary. These reports are intended to just quickly show how much we've received, where we were planning on spending it and how much we have left in the impact fee budget. So per the twenty twenty one budget, those are the project capital projects identified in the budget that would be funded in part by impact fees. And then on the right side is how much we actually spent for out of TIF on the project itself. So you can see we had five projects that we identified, we were going to spend impact fees on, and we spent them on four of those. I'm going to move down to the table two. This is just a simple summary, where there's our beginning balance, three point eight million. We spent about two million as on the shown in the previous table. We collected about one point two million and we received interest on it. So our current ending fund balance, the end of twenty twenty one was almost three million dollars. Any questions on transportation impact fees? All right, I'm going to jump to park impact fees now. Similar format, this is what was budgeted in actual expenditures made for twenty twenty one. And so you can see community paddler stock only project, we spent all of the money that we spent out of the twenty twenty one project from impact fees. Of course, the majority of the project expenses are going to come in twenty twenty two, because that's when we're the floats are actually installed and we would pay for them. So you'll see more of the community paddler stock expenses in twenty twenty two summary. And again, these numbers are just carried down table two, showing the beginning balance, the project expenses, revenues, interests. So we have about seven hundred seventy five thousand dollars in ending fund balance at the end of year in parking back fees. And then lastly, school impact fees, that's a little different than the previous ones, but generally the same. We received this, most of our data from the school themselves. There's a note in here at the beginning and and identifying the asterisk at the end. The school district's budget year is September first through August thirty first, so it doesn't fall in line with our collection and reporting. But we we have adjusted the table, both the revenues that are identified here and the table. That that does show the September one through August thirty first timeframe. But sometimes, since we're transferring money, we don't, if an impact fee revenue comes in right at the very end of the month, it might not move over to our books until the following month. And so there's always a few dollars that we don't capture in our revenues that are 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 not matching exactly what the school district sees on their books. So this the impact fee revenues here at five hundred seventy five thousand dollars is a number from the school district. And but if you look at the tables at the very end, there's a different number. I think it's off by one hundred twenty eight dollars this year. So. But you can see the school district had a healthy beginning fund balance. They've made a lot of expenditures through their Swiftwater Elementary School construction and having any fund balance about one hundred fifteen thousand. Okay, that's what I wanted to present today. Happy to talk more about impact fees if you'd like, but that's our annual report. Any questions?
Jeff.
Yes.
Hi, Councilmember Lykins.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. So with these impact fees and you give the the amounts collected, you know, current. I know that the revenue forecasts are related to growth year to year. How do these impact fees compare to what's been collected over time? And if we're slowing our growth rate and our buildable lands are getting built up, are these expected to go down and how do you account for that?
Yes, they they will go down. We, I don't know if we've hit our bubble. I don't think we've hit the top of the bubble. Though our our bubble has been up high for quite a while. We do look at what projections for impact fees will be collecting just like we do for water GFCs, sewer GFCs, stormwater GFCs. And so we often budget by being very conservative and underestimating so that we don't end up short. But I think for twenty twenty two, we're anticipating one hundred residential units being completed. I can I can almost guarantee it's going to be more than that, but we will continue to just look at that every year when we go through the budgeting process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Park impact fees, can they be used on anything in the park? Can they be used to purchase parks? Is there a restriction on what they can be used for?
They can be used on pretty much anything that's not operational.
So no maintenance?
Correct. No maintenance, no operations, but it has to be in the capital plan. So we just need to make sure that we are we're spending it on a project that's identified in the capital plan. So if the capital plan identifies that we're going to be purchasing property, then we could use it to purchase that property.
Jeff, didn't we do some sort of study to establish what our park needs were going to be? And then that helped establish the fee that we charge and can we only use that money for items that were in that study?
Yeah, that's usually the way that these these impact fees are used. The loosely, the city's comprehensive plan continues to update the projects list. So it can be used as long as it's on that project list. So but it's better to do like we've done with transportation is to routinely review the project list through a separate study and identify the fees associated with new development, but we haven't done that with parks.
So when we do transportation impact fees, we are limited on using that revenue for to the projects that were identified as enhancing capacity in the city, correct?
Yes, yes, we are.
Unless you do another study or you you amend your study.
Right, but in but we are also allowed to, like I said, in parks, we're allowed to look at the capital project list that we have adopted through the
So it's a little bit more flexible.
It's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
So the transportation impact fees, is that the one that's fogline to fogline?
It doesn't have to be. It has to be paying for transportation improvements in the transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan. And it has to benefit, it has to show benefit to vehicular trips. I mean, the the city looks at intersections and has levels of service, and so we have to make sure that we're improving levels of service. There is, there there's a philosophical debate about if you put sidewalks and bicycles, is that improving levels of service? Well, it some some people do say it improves level of service, because if you have a narrow eleven foot lanes in each direction and no shoulder and no bike lanes, does that slow down traffic? Does that reduce your level of service? Well, it it probably does, because traffic's not as easily able to move through an area where people are walking on the side of the road and biking in the middle of the road. So by building those improvements, you've now improved your traffic flow.
So we can use his funds for Burnham.
Yes, and I'm I'm almost certain Burnham is on the list of projects for the transportation
For the street and the sidewalks.
Yes, because it's 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 a holistic project. It's not just adding sidewalks onto the side. You're doing improvements across the across, including the traveling.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, well. Thank you for your time and we'll be back again next year on this with this topic.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Council, I forgot to build in a brief five minute recess. Is that something that you would all agree with till we for the next items? Okay, so five minutes, we will go to a recess and be back at three forty nine. Morning again. Hey, we are back from our recess. The time is three fifty PM and we are moving on to agenda item number three, which is discussing in-person council meetings, and this will be City Clerk Stecker.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we have on the agenda today, discussion about resuming in-person city meetings. As we all know, the statewide mask mandate is dropping on Saturday. And we have a revised policy that I'll let Tony explain to you here in a minute. But one of the things that this will impact is our council meetings. Now that the mask mandate lifted, what the mayor and city administrator and staff are proposing is that we start holding our regular council meetings, the Monday evening meetings in person. These will be hybrid meetings. That'll be on Zoom and accessible to the public remotely. Couple of conditions.
Only be audio on Zoom, correct?
Yes, so there's a there's a couple of caveats to how this will work. First thing to remember is that there are still COVID emergency measures in place, and one of those is that we have to simultaneously broadcast our meetings. So we will keep using Zoom the way we're using it. And really what I've heard from council repeatedly is that they love using Zoom and we will always have that remote capability, even once we're fully done with COVID, and and this will be something that we integrate going forward. But it is a technical requirement of us. We don't have any video features in chambers yet. We, as you know, we've ordered those. We're under contract for those. There's a nationwide shortage on equipment. So we've been told the earliest we'll get those installed is May and we're kind of not really holding our breath that that will be when we get those, but they are coming. Until we get those, we only have the microphones that are on the dais really for any kind of broadcasting. So we won't have video of your faces. Anybody that turns in on Zoom will just see a blank screen or they'll see the staff or council participants that might be remote on Zoom will have their cameras on. So it'll be kind of a half broadcast that we'll put out there. So that that's what we'll be working with until we get our chambers set up. So that, that's what we'll be working with until we get our chambers set up.
Because Dorson has a comment or question.
Go ahead.
Oh, I apologize if I'm too soon. You're probably not done yet. But my question was, will, will we be able to see presentations still? I understand not having the video, but will those still be able to be shared?
Yeah, so we will still use the Zoom platform for all our presentations, so they will display just like, um, if you're at home watching on Zoom, you'll see it just like you see it now. And then the Zoom broadcast will be up on the big screen in council, so you'll see it up there.
Okay, thank you.
Or Henderson.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. So you'll be able to see if we raise our hand and we're on Zoom, but everybody else is in the council?
Uh, not the council members. So you won't be raising your hands anymore because you'll be at the dais.
No, but if.
We'll, we'll be able to see if the public raises their hand for comment. So that will probably be me sitting down at the clerk's desk with that pulled up. Maybe the mayor will have it up on her desk too. It kind of depends on how we set it up. But that, the public will still have that option to comment by raising their hand.
Understand.
That'll be up on the screen.
Any council members that might be on Zoom during that meeting, you'd be able to see our hands.
Yeah, we would, we would have them turn on their cameras and the, you would be able to see them on their camera on the big screen. So the other part of that, we're proposing this only for the main council meetings. Just.
We take us the whole questions till the end. Are you, are you almost done?
I'm, I'm almost done.
Okay, let's. Thank you.
So the reason we're only doing this for the main council meetings is because of the, the audio limitations. In order to get a good broadcast, we need to use those dais microphones. And your study sessions are kind of more conversational and, and we don't feel like if you're sitting at the dais, it's not the best format to have a study session type conversation. So we're proposing right now that we keep doing those on Zoom until we get a better solution set up for that. I'm not sure what that'll look like once we get our, our new equipment in. But hopefully we can, we can come up with something that's a little bit better of a solution. And we're also proposing that all of the boards and commissions keep meeting virtually because they'll have the same restriction unless they're, unless we bring them in and put them up at the dais, we won't be able to get a good broadcast from them. So, so that is our proposal in a nutshell. If there, yeah, if there's any more questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. And I think Tony wants to update you too on the mask policy that we're gonna have in place.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I have kind of two questions. Um, one is I would like to hear from Councilmember Liggins from a health professional perspective on her opinions on, or her professional opinion on the safety of going back to new in-person meetings for council meetings at this point in time. And I, the second question is, what is, I'm assuming that we have a provision for, unfortunately, when, rather than if, we have another outbreak and another surge. What's the, the process and how quickly can we say, okay, we're going back to all virtual, that kind of thing?
Well, I'll do the answer to the second question, but I'll let Councilmember Liggins answer the first question.
Okay, you put me on the spot, Mary.
Sorry.
No, it's all good. Um, so I, I think that it looks like we're starting this at the end of the month on the twenty-eighth. That, that's correct. That's the proposal. You know, anybody who still wants to wear a mask or is exposed to anybody who's immunocompromised, I encourage you to wear a mask. Um, anybody who's not feeling well, I would encourage you to wear a mask and or come in remotely. Um, but it's a personal choice and the indoor mask mandate is lifted. I will still have to wear a mask continually because I work with immunocompromised patients. Matter of fact, I'm working tomorrow. So, um, you know, I think it's a really personal choice. Um, and so long as there's options, which it looks like there is, um, and, and the reality of having another short-term mask mandate, if we have surges, for example, next winter, is certainly there. COVID, if anything, has shown us it's a bit unpredictable. Um, but you know, maybe we can breathe and meet in person while we can. Um, those who want to wear a mask should wear a mask. Those who don't, you know, have that flexibility. So I, I'm okay with it. Yeah, I'm okay with it.
And, and with regards to pivoting, um, I think we've shown that we can do that pretty well when something has popped up. I mean, you members, uh, gosh, was it near the end of January when we were having family members who were testing positive? A few employees, we just shut everything down for ten days and we did that within twenty-four hours. So I'm confident that if we do have some sort of issue pop up, that we can adjust and adjust pretty nimbly.
Okay.
And just to add to that, I know that we were going to have some in-person things when it was surging. And I know I reached out to Mayor and Tony and within a half an hour, things were changed. So people were certainly very responsive and I appreciated that.
With regards to our mask policy, I wrote up a new one earlier this week. Uh, I had it vetted through the IT, I'm sorry, HR on the mayor, then we then sent it over to the unions. They have said they have no problem with it and I actually just shot it out to everybody while we were having the discussion on the UGA. The short summary of it is the mask mandate inside is, is no longer effective. However, as Councilmember Liggins was saying, uh, if somebody wants to wear a mask, I think the term you, I use, and I stole it from a school district, is we will honor and respect that choice. Meaning I don't want anyone making fun out of somebody because they choose to wear a mask. They may choose to wear a mask because they have an immune issue. They may have somebody at home who has an immune issue. They just might be more comfortable wearing a mask. In addition, if there is somebody who is wearing a mask, say I'm sitting here in my office and I want to wear a mask whenever I interact with people. If you come in my office and I say, please wear a mask, the, the directive is you will wear the mask, not I'll think about it or maybe I will. If you're requested by a fellow employee or a visitor to City Hall, if you're meeting with a visitor in a conference room and they ask you to wear a mask, put it on. If we have a visitor who comes to City Hall who is supposed to meet with an employee who would prefer they wear a mask, uh, we will ask that visitor to wear one, but if they will not, then we will figure out a way to provide them the service they're asking for um, through a different employee or maybe something virtually, uh, we will work it out. I am not gonna put anybody in the position of having to be forced to not wear a mask when they would really prefer to and to be in the presence of people who they would prefer to wear a mask. So that's what the policy essentially says. It doesn't outright talk about what happens if a visitor refuses to wear a mask and the employee wants to. But I think those would be few and far between and I think the employees know that we got their back and we'll make sure they're safe.
Thank you.
It really is about respect, you know, for each other coming out of this pandemic and just, you know, going with what people are comfortable with and respecting those decisions as best we can. And really just making it as positive of an experience as we can. You know, a lot of people are still a little bit fearful and, and so we want to make sure that we're honoring those feelings and, um, not making anyone uncomfortable. So appreciate your understanding and caring about our, our staff and yourselves and our community.
So Josh, do we have anything else to discuss about in-person meetings? Counsel, are you comfortable with what we've put together? And we'll, you know, well, we'll modify as we need to. But I think Josh, Josh put this all together, by the way, and I think he did a good job of summarizing what it is we want to do and how we'll handle things.
One more note I just added there is that we, we can use Zoom to accommodate council members who, if you don't want to wear a mask and, but you don't feel comfortable being there, you can join the meeting over Zoom and we'll have you on the big screen.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, we're offering that to staff too, so any staff that don't feel comfortable being in chambers for the entire meeting, we, we'll accommodate them that way as well. So, um, that'll, that'll be more effective once we get our, uh, equipment installed, but we can, we can make it work in the meantime too.
Whenever the heck that happens. It was supposed to be installed last October.
Yes. Thinking there's gotta be, I mean, I was at the, the first in-person Public Affairs Forum this morning for the chamber and they had a neat little system with a little remote-controlled camera and it worked beautifully. And I thought, how, we could get something like that, just in the interim at least. So, anyway, we'll see. I thought about asking Miriam what, what her little setup was because it was actually really cool. And Councilmember Henderson, and I apologize, most of you are frozen on my screen at the moment. I don't know why this is doing this all day on my computer, but I think I see a hand raised, Councilmember Henderson.
You're, you're muted, Councilmember.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Still muted, Councilmember Henderson.
Sorry. I think you owe two dollars to the pot now. Yeah, that's a lot. I'm gonna have to ask for a raise. Did I hear you correctly that you might try to set something up a little different for study sessions and everybody sitting at the DS? Because that's, and I mean, that's a, it's okay for presenting city council meetings, but for discussions during study, it seems like it's an awkward.
Yeah, what, what I was saying is we will continue to do, do those on Zoom like we are now.
Okay, but later on, we might be able to get something in one of the.
Later on, I think once we get our, our equipment installed, we'll have to figure, figure out how that will work exactly. Will depend on where the cameras are and where we can get the microphones. And there'll be some planning involved in that, but I haven't really sorted it out yet.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Okay.
Okay.
We will move on to item four. Updates to council, city council guidelines and procedures. And again, this is our city clerk, Josh Stecker.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so we are getting ready to dive into updating the council guidelines and procedures document. Um, just a bit of history, this was adopted in October of twenty twenty. Um, and up until that time, council have never had any formal rules of procedure and showed at times. Um, this, this document was always intended to be a living document that we update and modify, you know, fairly regularly to make sure that it's working for council and, and carrying out what you, what council desires to have carried out. Ready to do another update. We've been collecting thoughts and ideas from council members and staff and things that they'd like to see changed to help make things operate a little smoother. Um, and so this memo that I put together is just a quick one-page summary of some of the things we're looking at. Um, what I'd like to do today is just get a little bit of direction from council on what they would like to see us bring forward as far as revisions. Um, we can get some language drafted and have another study session and, and go over those and make sure we're on the right track to see what council wants to get adopted. Um, the procedures are adopted by resolution, so each time we update them, we just pass a new resolution that supersedes the one before. Um, so diving into what we're planning to talk about.
I just want to make one quick comment if I can also, Josh. The items that we put in here are things that we have either thought of or we have heard from council members or staff. If there's any other topic or issue that is not covered here, please bring it up. Uh, and we can, uh, put that into the mix as well.
Josh, would you like to start by just addressing the items that are in here or just kind of let council?
Yeah, let me, let me go down the list. There's kind of, it's a little bit of a domino effect to the list. The, the first item is kind of the, the key one. What we've done since the first of January is we've temporarily suspended all of the standing council committees, um, as we all know. Um, and what we're hearing from, from council in our discussions is that that seems to be working pretty well for you and you're, you're pretty happy with the way that things are going, having these regular study sessions and getting everything in front of, uh, full council all at once. Um, so if council is ready to make that decision to go forward with dissolving those committees, what that will take is an ordinance that repeals chapter two point five one of the municipal code, um, which outlines the committees and what their responsibilities are. Uh, for the most part, those responsibilities are typically designed as each committee shall consider the policies and matters related to that committee. So there's not really much we need to do there because any policies and matters now become policies and matters of the full council. There's a couple of, there's a couple of things that we get hung up on, um, in the code that we'll need to fix. One is a really obscure reference to the Finance and Safety Committee, which says they will review street closure measures for special events. And that we can easily farm off to the Chief of Police or, uh, the mayor or some other department to take care of. Um, the big one is the Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee that interviews the applicants for vacancies on advisory boards. We will need to come up with a system to, uh, make those recommendations for appointment. There's a couple of different options that are open to you. We can create a council committee that does that and to replace this committee. Have some kind of an option for doing those formal interviews. Or we can go to a system that's kind of more aligned with what other cities use and have that, uh, obligation deferred to the mayor. Um, been talking with a lot of other cities around Pierce County and, and trying to see what they're, what they do. And it's pretty much universal that the mayor is the person that conducts these interviews with applicants. The mayor reaches out to them, gauges their interest, um, kind of feels them out for their expertise level. The mayor talks with staff and the chairs of these committees and, you know, tries to figure out who they think would be a good fit. Um, and then the mayor makes that recommendation to council for appointment. Um, the only city that I found that doesn't do it this way is the city of Tacoma, which has a myriad of boards and commissions and they actually have a special council committee that meets, I think, weekly to review those. Um, so a little bit different situation than we're in here. After talking with the mayor and staff, I think our recommendation would be that we explore having a system like that where we refer these to the mayor, um, to make recommendation to you. Uh, the way this process works, um, the last city I worked at, when we get an application from someone who wants to be on a committee, we take that application and we forward it to all of council and say, this person has applied to be on the Parks Commission. Uh, the mayor will be reviewing this application. If you have any comments or, um, concerns about this applicant, please reach out to the mayor and let her know. Um, then at that point, the mayor will collect all of the applications that come in. She'll have conversations with them. She'll have conversations with staff and then bring forward a recommendation. So if, either way, the council wants to go, if we want to create a standing committee or an ad hoc committee of council to do these interviews, um, we can do it that way and maybe put that in the code or council rules. Or we can revise council rules to include, um, a process by which the mayor can make those appointments. But it's really, that's something that we need direction from council on to see what, which direction council wants to go.
But it would still be, the mayor makes the recommendation for appointment and the council confirms, correct?
Yes, for every committee except for the Civil Service Commission. That one is entirely in the mayor's purview.
And that is by statute.
That's by statute, yeah. And that's another thing I will point out is that there are a few committees by statute that have appointment processes. And those are almost entirely always mayor-appointed and that's because the state, I think, just assumes that all cities operate the same and defer this, um, appointment process to the mayor. So that's why consistently in, in state law, you'll see the mayor making appointments and council confirming. Um, so if we decided to make it consistent across all boards, that would make it a little bit easier in reconciling with state law and some of our committees. Um, so if council has any thoughts on that, we could tackle that one first and then move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Josh, do you want to call on, or do you want me to do that?
Uh, I can call on them if that's all right.
Okay, yeah.
We're going through this, sure. Sorry, Roger.
It's okay. Josh, did you chat with any of the commission members or the, um, the, um, Parks Commission, everybody else as to what they thought about this potential for commission, new commission members being sent to the mayor for selection and then approved by the council? It sort of takes it, I don't know if it takes it out of their hands more, but have you chatted with them just to get their input and thoughts on it?
Yeah, so the, I have not talked to any of them directly. The way that it currently stands is they're invited to be part of the interview panel. Um, and under the proposal, if we, if we switched and did it to a mayor-appointed way, what we would put in council rules that they would be part of the discussion, um, with the mayor when the mayor makes her recommendation.
A discussion with the chair of the committee, right?
It's the chair. The, the entire committee should not be consulted on their.
Correct.
Uh, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. I, um, am in favor of both of the processes of, as you have recommended them, Josh. I'm almost always in favor of going with the best practices of the most other, most cities when we're trying to change something. Because if someone else is doing it well and we think that that will work for us too, I think it makes sense because we can get input from them on how they've done it and what has worked and what hasn't as well. Um, and as far as the commission chairs go, I think that they would have the, in reality, the same. input as they currently have. Because while they are welcome to sit in on those interviews, they're not always welcome to offer input on those interviews. So I I think they'd have the same input. And as a new council member, I've really enjoyed being part of the full group study sessions because it helped, I think it has helped us all get up to speed faster. And to understand everything because otherwise we have a small group that's listening to one set of things and asking questions and then the rest of us would be fine. Trying to catch up without the ability to have the interaction with the experts who are making the presentation. So I think it actually maybe speeds things up a little bit.
Councilmember Walker.
Yes, thank you. So in the past, the committee has always worked well for interviewing commission members for volunteer boards. I'm still in favor of that. I think it gives you a lot of different viewpoints and I'm, I'm, I would like to see a round robin of council members sit on these various, sit on this committee to interview volunteers rather than only one person's view. I think that's important. And so I would rather see some sort of committee and and have them cho, and have council members all have an opportunity to sit on a committee to interview volunteers.
Councilmember Dunson.
Yeah, I will speak in favor of Councilmember Wu's idea as well. I mean, I think it would work fine either way, and ultimately the mayor does have the the authority to make the recommendation, but I've sat on this committee for several years now. And it's really, really, it's really a fun opportunity to get to know folks in the community and and they can get to know you and and like Councilmember Wu said, we, you know, there's three different perspectives. I think it's a, it's a nice way for council members to engage and feel a little bit more involved. And then the recommendation obviously goes to the mayor and and we do always invite the the chair of whatever committee we're appointing to, and I think we always really welcome their input because we we need to know what what they want in their council. So I would, I don't necessarily want to do it anymore, which is why I didn't, I didn't want to speak up just because of time. But for those of you who haven't had the opportunity, if there are people that want to do it on council, I mean, it's a really lovely experience.
So at this point, I think if if we could get direction from council on which way they want us to prepare this, we can, we can get it, something put together, we can really, either way, we can get it into your council rules, but I think we need some kind of direction from council on what they'd like to see. Councilmember Henderson.
Do you want us to vote? I think even though it's not a usual practice, a motion and a second for one way or the other, and let's vote and see which way the council wants to go. Otherwise, we're just going to keep going around in circles. Right.
And we'll start with the board and commission or the interview, so we'll start with that one and then go to the council of the whole versus standing committees after that. Okay.
But I think first we should make sure we have consensus for the council of the whole because if we don't, then we don't need to have the other conversation.
Oh, yes, you're right. That's, I did it backwards. So show of hands, either by the little hand icon or your physical hand, how many are in favor of remaining with council of the whole? Okay, looks like a majority to me, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll remain with council of the whole. And then discuss.
Our hands up, so I have a question or a comment.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, it was hard to deceive who was voting and there's a question. So just something I'd like to put out there is, you know, initially when we, you know, started this, we were talking about, you know, reevaluating in June, doing it for the first six months, which I think is a great onboarding. I will have to just say on my my own side, it is a large time commitment. I'm learning a lot, but it is scheduled during the day. So would like it's to, you know, look at possibility of moving that to potentially later in the afternoon. Don't want to necessarily minimize the time because it is very valuable, but something to consider. No, no decision necessary at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
So I will make a motion that for that we have council members sit on the commission to interview volunteers for our commission and that that and that the council members happen that are selected through a round robin process.
I second that.
Okay. Any council discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So all those in favor of Councilmember Wu's motion to have a committee of some sort to interview volunteer commissions, say aye.
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 Okay, hold on. I heard two ayes and I saw a couple of hands, so maybe raise your hands.
Yeah, raise, raise your hands. One, two, three, four.
Four, okay. So that motion passes four to three. And then do you need further direction, Josh, on what how we would do this committee in terms of would it be a lottery drawing? Would it be, you know, to to pick the three council people that will rotate and then what that rotation schedule will be?
Yeah, I will need to draft something into council rules that kind of captures that.
I was, I was going to suggest that Josh and I can put together may maybe two or three options for you to consider. How the initial committee is selected and then when you rotate on and rotate off. Is it once a month? Is it once every three months? But figure out a way to make sure that each council member gets an opportunity to be on that committee for about three months.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. I'm seeing nodding heads. And so we would bring that back to council, maybe at that next study session where we're talking about this again.
It will be incorporated in the council rules changes that we present.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll, there'll need to be some finessing because we'll have to get around some Open Public Meetings Act. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Councilmember Leipnitz.
Um, yeah, do the interviews usually happen in the evenings or are they during the day, just like like Seth, for those of us that work, because this is a time commitment, so.
They, well, typically when the committee met in the past, I believe it was at either two o'clock or three o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. Thanks.
And and if your name is drawn or you're in that round robin and you have a commitment issue or a work conflict, just let us know and we can accommodate. We'll, we'll figure out how to work around.
We can, we can, we can word this that there's a standing meeting time, but we can also say that it that can be modified to take into account the schedules of both council members and people who have applied to be on a board or commission.
Yes.
Because the last thing you want to do is have somebody who's really looking good, say, I can't make it until five o'clock or six o'clock, right?
Right. Yeah, I think we should remain as flexible as possible.
All right, well, that segues nicely into our second topic, which is we're we are working on incorporating some stand, some guidelines that are consistent for all of our boards and commissions into council rules. We've got models from a few different other cities that have done this. We have a lot of the same questions that come up pretty consistently across our advisory boards, like the Parks Commission and Arts Commission. Questions about, you know, how do we communicate with council? How do we communicate with staff? How do we communicate with the public? How do we get things on our work, our work plan? How do we how do we get special meetings or things like that? So really what we're going to do is kind of just try to collect a lot of the rules that that we've used for the committees and just make them centralized and consistent across each committee. And just put them into its own chapter in your council rules so that it's there for everyone to know and we won't be needing to recreate the rule with each new committee. Councilmember Wu.
Yes, so we had discussed before that about the the volunteers working, volunteering on these commissions should be in within the code of, they should not be violating our city code. So we had talked about that before. I'd like to see that in those rules and guidelines.
Yep, that's one of the things that we're working on. There are not, across our boards, there are not consistent rules for how we remove someone from the board if that comes up. I think what what I will end up proposing is something along the lines of council by majority vote can remove someone. Or we can delegate that to the mayor as well if there's someone who's very clearly and obviously violating the code or, you know, these rules that we're creating. And it can't be reconciled, then we can have, we can give the mayor the ability to do that administratively without having to go to council. So I'll come up with some language that kind of encapsulates that.
Right.
I think the challenge too is wanting to be transparent about it, but also wanting to take into account the person's reputation and that kind of thing too. I know there was an instance that we ran into of non attendance and to to have that person removed technically required a hearing before city council. And we ended up not having to do that, thanks to Josh. But I think it's very, I think we have to make sure that whatever guidelines we put into place are not such that we're requiring, shall we say, public exposure of our volunteers who may have stepped out of bounds for a moment.
Sure. And I think if we have clear guidelines as to what the rules are, you know, if you miss three meetings in a row, for example, you may be removed, but maybe you have really good reason, like, you know, a family member was sick or you were sick. I mean, there's, you have to be flexible, but at the same time, you also have to have guidelines that everyone understands.
Right.
And I do like the idea of having the mayor make that a decision. As you were saying, Councilmember Barber, that somebody may, you don't want to embarrass them. You don't want it to ruin their reputation for something. And trying to protect their privacy, I think, is really important.
All right, so that that is, that's in the process right now. I should have something for you to see the next study session on on that chapter. The next item is refining the policies for agenda and packet publication. We talked about it at the last council meeting. So in this instance, we'd like to get something in there that says what council's expectation is for when packets will be posted.
So right now, the this, the code says it's it's Wednesday, correct?
It alludes to it as being Wednesday. I think what I might recommend for language there is just something that says in general, council packets will be posted five days before the meeting. That's council's expectation. And then just maybe an acknowledgement there may, that there may be extenuating circumstances rarely where the mayor would have the authority to post a packet later than that if we had to. Something, something along those lines. The number of days, I think that's where we need council direction on. Councilmember Wu on Monday proposed six days. I've seen five, I've seen four. It's really kind of council's direction on what they want to see in their.
Your meeting and your packet.
Yep. So Councilmember Wu.
Yes, thank you. So on page 12 of 18 of our current guidelines and procedures, it does say, agenda package shall be published on the C's website before 5:00 PM, five calendar days. Because of the reasons I stated, I think that it's, I think it is important to reach out to our community and have the engagement be a a two way process. And I know sometimes it's not possible to get this done. Also, on page 12, it says before the meeting date, items may be revised or added to the agenda after publication, subject to the mayor's discretion. So I would like to see us at least say, we will strive to have this published six days before. And if there's a problem, then there's a problem. But I would rather see strive, I think it sends a because we have done this for six years on Tuesday, it's, it's to to change it, it takes something away from our citizens. And I don't ever want to take away the opportunity from our citizens to learn about what we're talking about. I know we do meetings now on the, at the end of the council meeting, and those are wonderful, but there are no documents there. And and when you get a document, when you get documents on on Wednesday at 3:30 or 3 o'clock, there's not often, sometimes time for our citizens to 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 reach out to staff to find out what this is about and to answer their questions. So I I would like to see strive for six days. That's what I'd like to see, along with the other information about being able to change the or amend the agenda, I mean, the agenda and have a placeholder.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Is there a statute that says how much notice the public requires or needs?
Yes, that's the Open Public Means Act and it's 24 hours.
Oh.
Councilmember Storset.
I think a little bit, it's already been answered between Jenny's and Roger's comments. To me, this is, I think, kind of a non-issue. I think the staff does a great job getting this out in advance on six days, even following times like a three day weekend where they may be off on a Monday and we still get it on a Tuesday. I'm okay with putting language in there for five days. I don't even know that it's necessary, you know, to add any other type of pressure to them. I'm pretty confident that the work that they're going to do. And like I said before, I just prefer a quality packet, even if it's means, you know, one day less to look at it, knowing that they put their best work forward.
All right. So is there any consensus to change it from the five days that it says now? Councilmember Wu's proposed. I guess a show of hands if you, if you want to see a change to six days. All right. I think I have direction there.
However, I will also say that I do appreciate the the language that says strive for six. I I like seeing those packets go out on Tuesdays and we will strive for that, Councilmember Wu. And we will try to hit that day as often as we can.
All right. Next up is our refining policies for accepting public comment, going back to Monday nights, last Monday night's discussion as well. This one is just basically addressing written public comment and does council want a policy where we will read written public comments that are submitted. We have discussion a little bit, so I guess I'll open it up here just to see if any council has any proposals they want to put out there to include something in council rules. And I see Councilmember Wu's up again.
So page seven of 18 of the council guidelines says the city council desires to allow a maximum opportunity for public comment. So I I would like to see that during a, during a time when the council and citizens cannot be together in public, that if a citizen wants to have their three minute letter read during comment time, that that it does get read only during the three minutes during a time when we cannot be together. It doesn't take a long time to read these letters and and I can, you know, I I just think that's an important thing to do for our citizens and not to not to ignore their words. Their words are important. That's who I work for. And so, so, so that I I think that's important. Thank you.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
I support Councilmember Wu's remarks. I think it's important that we all get to hear them. Sometimes the written comment will come to us in an email, but it'll just be hours before the meeting and we're not always able to see it. So I think when they're read, the entire public gets to hear it. And and the rest of the public listening knows what made us bend one way or another. So I think it's important that they're read.
Our Councilmember Henderson.
And I support both Councilmember Wu and Rothenberg's opinion. I think another thing is there there may be people out there that are uncomfortable reading out a comment out loud. It's tough or being in public and giving a comment like that. This, this gives an opportunity for a subset of the people to write the comment out, make it as good as they can and submit it and then everybody can hear it. So I I'm in favor of it. I, we don't have that many written comments anyway, so I think it's a pretty minor thing, but it's good to have it.
Our Councilmember Storset.
Well, first, I love hearing the opinions on this, so I hope to hear from other council members as well. Because I wouldn't say my mind's totally shifted on this. While I do want to hear from all of our citizens, there is other platforms for doing that. We have opened up a virtual option. We also take all of this, this written into our documents and it's filed for for the public as. Uh, option. Um, we also take all of this, this written, uh, into our documents, and it's filed, uh, for, for the public as well, which can be at a greater length than three minutes of reading. Um, I know that there's also frustration on how fast someone may read the letter, um, and not be able to get through the whole thing to maybe where their points are made. So if this is something that the, the council decides to move forward with, I'd like us to look at, is there something? That we can do, not to put the pressure, say, on Josh for, uh, speed reading, um, but is there something to maybe suggest how many words are in the letter? Um, so that it could be read during this. I don't, you know, I don't necessarily want to hear from Siri, uh, on reading this out loud or something, but. It might be a better way of getting it, um, under control, and I would also agree, we don't get a lot of written comments currently, but we will. And so, uh, you imagine how many people show up at some of the council meetings, and there're gonna be some late nights. Um, I think also starting off with the letters, um, you know, if we start with the letters, which order they come in. Could just open that up for some duplication as well. Uh, I think there's times when people write a letter as well as come and speak. Um. And so the other part of this virtual environment that I think is very accommodating to speaking is that you don't have to have your camera on, for example. Um, you also, um, have a lot more flexibility than showing up at city council and sitting through maybe a portion of the meeting before it gets to open comment on something. Um, or one of the topics that. Um, it allows you to listen, but maybe not have to be there, and I think that also creates, uh, a more welcoming, uh, and inclusive environment. Thanks.
Councilmember Lichten.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Um, so I, I support, you know, especially during these times where we can't meet together, the reading of the letters. But I wonder if we shouldn't all kind of step back and look at how we work with public comment. I agree with all of the comments that we work for the citizens. That's very, very important. But I feel like the format of the public comment at the meetings is one-way communication. And we passively listen. There is not a chance to ask questions, have any engagement. Um, and you know, I, I've looked through some of the Jurassic Parliament stuff, some of A W C stuff, and there are, on some of these more, um, hot-button topics, there's different ways that we could engage with citizens, and I agree, I think it's really, really important. But could we have? Uh, more of like town hall type meetings where we can actually engage, or look at having a response to those that, um. Make public comment that if there is a staff member available that could quickly answer a question that they could do that, or I heard, um. I've even heard of city administrators, Tony, I won't put you on the spot, but I heard one of the city administrators that was interviewing say that she would go if she thought she could help someone and give her, her, their business card. As they left the podium and say, let me follow up with you, because sometimes I feel like people say something, and we all just sit there. And there isn't a chance for that discourse, and could we explore ways to engage with the public, look at guidelines, and maybe, for example, in some of the hot-button issues. Maybe if a person is representing a group of people who've signed on to their letter, maybe give them five minutes, maybe let them have presentations with slides, you know? I just wonder if this isn't something that, you know, we're not gonna do right away, but we could look at different options, so. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Work.
Yeah, my proposal is actually for during the time when citizens cannot attend council meetings and when we cannot be with them. This would be, it would, they would be read at that time if they want to be read, if they ask to be read. It's not every, it's not everyone, but if they say, please read, I would like to have this read during a council meeting. And, uh, so would be, that would be a stipulation, three minutes is a stipulation, and, and during a time when citizens and council cannot meet together, I think that's an important part of it. Thanks.
Okay, so, uh, just to clarify, Councilmember Work, I, so you would be referring to not accept, not reading written comments, like, starting on the twenty-eighth when we're back in person? Or, or are you thinking further down in the future than that?
No, I'm thinking we wouldn't be reading them on the twenty-eighth. This is only when citizens cannot be with council members during a meeting. I mean, maybe somebody else wants them read all the time. I don't know that that's important because, but I think that during the time when we cannot be together. If they want to have their, their letter read, then it should be read. You know, and, and, and we don't have a lot of them, so it's, uh. You know.
Okay, I think in, in that case, in that situation, I would recommend not addressing this in council guidelines and just. Let's be optimistic and assume we're not going to be, get back in that position, hopefully, anytime soon, but if we do go back into that position where. We're meeting fully remotely and we can't take people's public comment in person. Um, that could just be a simple direction from council to the mayor, just saying. You know, now that we're going back into these remote meetings, let's, let's provide that opportunity, and I don't think we need to spell that in council rules. That can just be. Um, something that the mayor knows what council would like to see, and we will. Um, just. We'll pick up that, that procedure again when the time comes.
I'd like to address, uh, Councilmember Lichten's comment regarding. Public comments that it is, we passively listen, we don't react to anything. Uh, for the most part, that is the way most councils operate their meetings. However, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be reacting or responding to some of the comments we get. Um, and like one of your candidates commented, there are many times when I was, uh, city manager, uh. Citizen would come up and have, make a comment, and we weren't going to re- respond to it, but I. I knew the answer, it was complicated, and we didn't want to take ten minutes to, at the council meeting, so I would hand my card to them, or I would have a department director hand their card to them. I think it would be a good idea, though, to have a standing policy that says that when people. Come and comment to us, particularly on those items that are not on the agenda. Do we have some sort of response to give them? Uh, and. I, uh, between Josh and I, we can figure out how to keep track of that. And make sure that those things are followed up on. Again, even if it's a simple answer that. Um, that's a crazy idea, and we can't do it. You know, well, we'll say it nicely and professionally, but if, if someone takes the time to come in, ask us a question, or give us an idea. Uh, even just a short email or a phone call or a letter that says, thank you very much for taking time to come to the council meeting. And I've done that in other cities.
I, I think that's a really good thing to do.
You're saying just follow up with them, not necessarily respond to them at the council meeting?
There were, there were times where they'd ask a very simple question that would take me ten seconds to answer. I've answered it, and that way we've taken care of their question, and we don't have to do any further follow-up.
I, I think the, the slippery slope, boy, I mean, you, we. It's not our job to get in arguments with people, and I can, I can see that happening. Uh. You know, if they. I think we're just opening up a can of worms. Ten seconds is okay, or maybe a policy where we respond to them, and then it's done. You know, they can't counter respond something, because I've seen council meetings granted, you know, on YouTube, and they get out of line.
Oh, they, they, they totally derailed.
Yeah, so I just think we need to be careful.
But it's a very fine line, but I, I, I do advocate for when someone comes and talks to you that we figure out some way to respond after the meeting.
After the meeting, I, I think is, is wonderful, uh, handing them the card. Or, or make, and it should be something that. Uh, maybe not, they can't always give us their contact information, but it'd be great if we took the initiative and contacted them. Instead of the other way around, but whatever is practiced, whatever is practical at the time.
I'd like to kick this around a little bit with Josh and the mayor to see how we can. Kind of normalize this as part of what we do, uh, at council meetings. And after council meetings.
Councilmember Work.
Yeah, I just want to remind us all that we have a particular citizen. Who, uh, likes to speak. And, uh, that's all I'm gonna say about that.
That's, but very often our public commentators will have already. Addressed their questions with staff and just may not like the answer.
Hey, I, I was exactly gonna say that, that, that some of these questions that we have heard have been responded to. Uh, many times over the years, and. The response is not what this, these people want to hear. I'm happy sending a letter saying we responded to that. Here's, here's the copy of the email we sent you four years ago.
But I think that's why something, like you said, Tony, like, thank you so much for your time tonight. We appreciate you being here.
Mm-hmm.
It's acknowledging them.
Councilmember Lichten.
Yeah, um. One of the things, I, I know that, I think it's the City of Tacoma that does, like, they have open, um, listening of public comment before every regular council meeting. Um. And I'm not saying we go to something like that, but I know we have comments on non-agenda items and then comments on agenda items. And I was watching a meeting recently where there was somebody who wanted to make a comment on an item. And the meeting went on for many, many hours, and they waited to give a one-line statement. On, on a, on a topic that was two and a half, three hours later. Is there any way, I, are there other councils or other examples where we could have all the public comment, like, be at the front? Just out of respect of the people who are calling in time so that they know between, you know, it's gonna be the first thirty minutes or, or whatever allowed so that they, just to give them respect? Is that something we could consider?
I believe that is the City of Tacoma that does that, and I, I believe the, the way they do it is they have a special. Or two separate council meetings, and their first council meeting is just for public comment on. Items and non-agenda items, so that the public can come and, and speak before the meeting, and then they get to their business in the second part. Um, and, and just roll through their business that way. Um, I'm. That, that's something we could explore. I could talk to Tony about that offline and see if he has any thoughts on, on.
I do.
How that works. Yeah, we, we can talk about it and see if we, if there's some options that we could present that might address that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Councilmember Stotchen.
Yes, thank you. Brenda, great comments. Um, I can't recall if you and I had maybe a discussion on this one before. Uh, I know I've, I've had, I've been at some of those Tacoma City Council meetings, uh, and had to wait several hours, um, you know, and it's. I remember finally, they finally said, good night at eleven, and I never got a talk, and that was painful. Um, so, so I think it is important. I think this comes down to how our agendas, um, are created too. Knowing that we put maybe those hot-topic items, you know, where we're expecting more comments up at the beginning, and then maybe some of the later stuff gets pushed off. I think that can be a big help. It's difficult when those get saved to the end, and that's where your, you know, majority of your people are with, with comments and such, and also fatigue sets in, you know, right? So. Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, so I'd be, I'd be curious, um, uh. Uh, what we can come back with.
Yeah, Josh and I can kick that around.
Yeah, alright, uh, moving on down the list, um. One of the things that we get a lot of questions, I get a lot of questions about is communications with council members, um. Communications between council members, uh, council members talking to, um. Staff or council members wanting to talk to the city attorney. Um. I think there's an opportunity here to have some kind of guidelines for when it's appropriate for council to contact staff, when it's appropriate to contact the city attorney. Um, what types of things you should send to each other and. In emails, um, I don't think we necessarily have any problems with these things. We don't really see issues popping up, but I think it might be helpful for council to have these. Um, spelled out in some guidelines that, that they can, that they can reference. I've been talking with our city attorney too, Daniel Kenny, and he's working with some of his other cities on social media usage policies for council. Um, we have a social media usage policy that we use, applies to staff, that doesn't. Um, apply to our, our council members. Um, and I think it might be beneficial for council to have some kind of standard that they hold each other to. Um, when communicating on social media, and I can get some examples from him. I haven't seen any yet, but I know he's been working on that, so he, he may be able to provide you something to work off of. Um. Yeah, uh, any thoughts on councils for what you might want to see? In a section like that. Uh, Councilmember Barber.
Um. Tony knows what I'm gonna say, because I talked to him about it this morning a little bit. I think I may have talked to you too, Josh. But I think that, that we need some policies around communications. Because right now, it's just a little bit. Too loose, and I'm not talking about communications among each other, but. When an email comes in right now, there's not really a policy for how it gets addressed. And so, again, getting back to our duty to engage with citizens, I think we need a. A hesitant to use structures because structures put us in little boxes, and I don't like tiny boxes. I like. Guidelines and ideas, but I think we need some sort of a process where, when an email comes in to all of us. One of us, and it's on a rotating basis, is assigned to answer that person.
No, no.
And the reason is because otherwise, no one may answer that person, and I think. That somebody needs to at least say, thank you for your comment to each person. And maybe that is a staff person who's responsible for doing that when we don't want to respond. But I think that for, again, for a constituent and needing to have one or wanting to have two-way communication. For us to not respond to them is not what any of us are talking about wanting. And I've been, um, asking. Uh, professional colleagues of mine who work in city government for best practices on those, and I'm still waiting for some more before I forward those to Josh.
Yeah, um, uh, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize, my, my, my microphone was on before. Uh, I, I, I am totally against. So, so when somebody sends me an email, I respond to them. I respond to them. I work for these citizens. It's my duty in my mind, in my mind, if someone takes their time to write an email, even if it goes blanket, and it comes to me. I respond. And I do not want to have that ability taken away. So.
Yeah, so I, I've, I've added this, uh, the reference to the mayor and council email into this section, because I know, I know it's an issue I've heard from other council members besides Councilmember Barber, that they're not sure how to respond to this or if they should. Um. Essentially, what we need, I think, is just like Councilmember. Barber stated, is we need some kind of assurance that someone is responding. And I think that needs to be, us, us, it needs to be delegated in council rules that either the mayor or the city administrator, or even the city clerk will send out some kind of a response that said, yes, your email's been received. Um, here's a response, or it's been forwarded to someone else to respond to you. Um, I think that's what we need to have in, in the policy. I, I totally agree with Councilmember Work that we should never, no council member should be prevented from responding if they, if they. Should, yeah. And I, yeah, I don't think that's the suggestion here at all, so. Um. Councilmember Rottenberg.
Yeah, I, I kind of, uh. Look at what is it they're talking about. I, I tried not to get into staff's business. If it's something about. Uh, why in the world are we doing this? I will defer that. I might respond by saying, I've sent your comments, even if it went to, uh, Director Langham to begin with. I, I will say, I got your email. I sent it on to Director Langham. He is the best person to answer your question, uh, development. Director, best person to answer your question, but if it's. Something else, I, I did one today. Uh. I will answer, I'm, I don't want the. My ability to respond to my constituents that elected me, uh, taken away, and, and I, I think it's all up to each one of us, uh. I mean, it's your job. If you don't want to do it, don't do it, and next time you run for election, you may not get elected if that's what you wanted. It's, it's our job to respond. But be careful.
That is not what I meant at all. What I meant was making sure.
I have the floor right now. Councilmember Barber. If you don't mind, let me speak, please. I, well, I lost my train of thought, but I think we, that's something, it should probably go into our. Policy is we shouldn't be interrupting one another when one is speaking. That's all I have to say.
I apologize, Councilmember Rottenberg.
Uh, Councilmember Storset.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, good comments. Again, I kind of, I just have a thought, maybe I'm kind of bridging this and see if we, I think we're getting some alignment here and through the discussion. And so I would agree with, uh, Jenny's comments and Lee's. Uh, sorry, I don't, I, I call you guys by your first name rather than council member, sorry. Um, first-name basis, but. Um, I agree with wanting the ability to do it. What I, what I would like, though, uh, that would give me confidence, and I think keep us in compliance, and why we have our city attorney involved, is giving us guidance on what we say, what the content is in those emails. And be sure that, you know, for example, we're not making promises or providing them with information that is maybe not public at that point, so. So I think that's the kind of guidance that we're looking for because right now I just kind of hesitate or I think the mayor or, or the city administrator will get back to them. And otherwise, you know, look for these things to come up in council meetings where we can discuss it more largely. So I think the guidance would be great and appreciated. I'd love to be able to review it similar to the way we've done this document today and kind of go through it bullet by bullet. Just make sure we're on the same page, but I think that would be helpful.
Councilmember Henderson.
Agree with councilmember Storset. We all represent the city. I'm just wondering if, and I, I understand that we have to answer, we can't answer, but what happens when we give out three different answers from three different council members on one topic? Say somebody says something about trees and I say, yeah, I'm for it, protect them. And two other people say, heck no, cut them down because, you know, we want timber money. I think that's where we need the, the guidance somehow that says, how do you prevent that from happening? Because in the final effect, we all represent the city, even though we're individuals, we all have different opinions. So I mean, clearly I don't, I don't want that taken away from us. I think, I think it's always better when one of us gets an email directly to us. Then we can certainly answer, but when it goes to mayor and council, it's in this zone for me that says, I'm afraid if I answer because it's going to be my opinion or the opinion of the folks that voted for me, yet I'm speaking now for the city as a response for the city. So again, I, I think it's challenging. I think we do, and we're all asking for the guidance on this.
Mayor.
Yeah, so I think Laura has been working on some of these things as well around communications and consistency in communications and has some pretty great ideas that she's planning to share relatively soon with council. And so I think you'll appreciate some of the things that she has been thinking of and, and putting together in regards to consistent messaging, messaging, especially on social media accounts, you know, where we like, like this hot button topic right now, Harborview Stints and Roundabout. There's a lot of angst on social media and we want to make sure absolutely that we are sending the same message across the board to our citizens about where we're at with this project, what's going on with the project, you know, and, and really Laura has asked that I convey to council, if you don't want to take the heat of these comments, send the, send a basic email that says, I appreciate you commenting. Thank you so much for your input. I am forwarding this on to, you know, Laura Pettit, our Communication and Tourism, where I'm forwarding this on to Director Langham. And that way you, you aren't having to answer maybe in an uncomfortable, in a way that makes you uncomfortable. And then it, and then that person gets a response and it's consistent with the response everyone else is getting. And so she's got some great ideas that she'll be bringing forth soon, especially because we've got a lot more months of this Harborview Stinson project to go. And so we're going to be talking about, about that, but I, I hear what you're saying, you know, it, and, and I always, I usually always respond to every email that comes into mayor and council. You don't see my response because I don't reply all. I just reply to that person. But there is all, and, and sometimes it is just a basic, thank you so much for your comment. We really appreciate what you have to say. You know, especially if it's someone that's like yelling at us, you know, in an email. I don't fight with people in an email. And generally if you just, they just want to know they've been heard. And so if you just send something back that just thanks them so much for reaching out and if they have additional questions or would like to speak with a staff person, I offer that to them. And generally the people are yelling, don't email back. They, it's like, they, it's like they just needed someone to listen to the mentoring and, and respond to them. And so I, I agree with all of you that there needs to be a consistent response method. And so we'll figure out, you know, what that is and Laura will help us with that. She's got some good ideas, so.
So I, I just wanted to make a quick comment. When it comes to communications, one of the things you're going to see for our study session next week when we go over the work that you did at the retreat and the priorities you put together and how we're going to structure dealing with all those is I'd like to see us put together a communications plan. And I mentioned this to councilmember Barber this morning. And it will cover a whole bunch of stuff, including how do we respond to emails that are addressed to the mayor and council email address. One thing I want to make very clear is when a citizen is sending you through mayor and council an email that says, I think you should do this, or I don't think you should be doing that, or what do you think about this idea? If it's a policy question where you have an opinion, as councilmember Henderson was saying, don't cut the trees down. Oh, hell yes, cut the trees down. You can express your political opinion in a response to that citizen. And that's kind of what they're asking you for. If you're comfortable doing that and you form an opinion that you're willing to share. But when it comes to a question about what is the city doing about, and let's take Stinson in Harborview, what is the city doing about getting that project done faster? I think that that's a question that you really want staff to deal with to make sure that everything that we're doing that you might not be aware of is included in that response. So that should be part of a communications plan. And Laura and I have talked about those things as I know the mayor has. And, but we need to make that clear. So you're comfortable in what you're doing. And most importantly of all, that people that take the time to send us an email and give us their thoughts are at least told, thank you very much for your thoughts.
Yeah. And in the meantime, until we have this kind of solidified, just if you're in doubt of what to say, just send it on to Tony or myself or Josh and just say, hey, what do you think I should do with this email? Who do you think I should send, send it to? And, and we'll provide some guidance there. So just when in doubt, forward it on to a staff person, one of us, and we'll, we'll.
But in doubt, throw it out, but.
Can't exactly do that.
All right. So we got one more dot point here, Josh.
Yep. Well, a couple more. I found one more that I need to add on, but we, city need a policy for issuing proclamations. The mayor reads proclamations at city council meetings or various events. We just kind of take those piecemeal and write them and sign them and get them out there. But we need some kind of a policy that says how proclamations are submitted to us, how they're reviewed, how they're approved, how they're issued and, and this is something that all, most cities have, so it won't be reinventing the wheel, but we'll get something formalized in the rules so that, so we have a policy for doing that. And we'll bring that to you next time. Councilmember Henderson.
Would this be a good time to bring up the topic of our land acknowledgement? I guess that's a proclamation of sort that we used to read at the beginning of our city council meetings.
And that was generally read the beginning of the meetings in October, November.
Yes, that's an agenda item for, for the October and November meetings.
So it's only going to be during those two months?
Only during those two months, and that's by resolution, I think. Resolution we adopted last year sometime. Councilmember.
Yes, so I, following along the lines of councilmember Henderson, I would like to see this revisited. And if we have to do it by resolution or if we can put it, put it in our council guidelines and procedures, I'd like to see it put in there. And, yeah, and furthermore, I'd like to see it that we read it at every council meeting. And I have a couple of more items. Do you want me to wait until we do something with that or just list out there?
Yeah, let's, well, let's go through them, but just real quickly, is that, do we have consensus from council that we should do the land acknowledgement before every meeting? Or because we can put that in council guidelines pretty easily if that's what council wants to see. Okay.
I see four.
Yeah, it looks like we have a consensus. One other thing just that didn't make it on my list that we've been talking about this morning. What I was talking about with Public Works Director Jeff Langham is the city has a policy in place for for contracting authority. And right now it's set at thirty five thousand, I believe, for the mayor to authorize certain agreements and contracts. And it goes down from there for staff level. We're going to be looking at revising that here in the next few months. I think Jeff's working on that. And it seems natural to roll that in with council's procedures. So we may incorporate that in either this update or a future one. But that, that's something we're going to be looking at too. That, that policy is not specific enough for some of the things that come up. So we're going to be looking at making that a little more useful. But yeah, if there's other things that council would like to see in the guidelines, this would be a great time to bring them up. So I see councilmember has her hand up.
Thank you. I have a couple. In the council guidelines, there is a, a sentence, there's a paragraph here on remote meetings and attending by remote. I think that needs to be updated. You know, because that was written, I believe, before the pandemic. And so I, I think that needs to be updated a little bit. And if council members are in Alaska, you should be able to attend remotely, you know, they should be able to do that if council member someplace else. And, and I think, I think that needs to be discussed. I don't know what it would change, but I, I do think that was before the pandemic and lots of things we've learned since the pandemic, and I think it needs to be revisited. Also, at the end of every council meeting, we have a, a list of upcoming city meetings. And I think that's a really great idea, but shouldn't it be in the council guidelines so that we know that that is a procedure that happens every council meeting?
I think that, that would probably be something we could amend there.
And have just two more. I would like to see presentations when the council is having someone present to us and then they show us a PowerPoint. I, I would like to have that PowerPoint at least the day of so that we can follow along and make notes with what they're presenting online. And for example, today, when they were talking about the ten guidelines to annexation, that was on there and it was also in our packet was, but it was page forty seven of our packet. And you had to scroll all the way through here to look at it, to try to find it where, what he was talking about at the same time so that you could make notes with what he's saying on what he's, what's on the screen. So I, I think we need to have those. And we don't need to have them a lot ahead of time. I know that sometimes people don't have their PowerPoints ahead. But I think it should be there before we have meetings so that when somebody's going through a PowerPoint presentation, we can follow along and write, have the ability to write notes. So, so I'd like to see that. And the last item I have on my list is I think it's time to discuss perhaps a code of ethics for the city council. And maybe you could come up with a code of ethics. I sent out a code of ethics to some council members. And, and, and we can decide if we want to have a code of ethics. Maybe we could look and see is there needed for a code of ethics. I know a lot of cities have a code of ethics for their council members. And I sure would like to see us address that perhaps. So I'm done.
I would like to comment on that one real quick. There is a code of ethics. I think it's contained in an RCW or a WAC. So we can certainly pull that out and bring that as a starting point for council. I think you'll find that is reasonably comprehensive. And we may want to tweak it a little bit. But you are correct. There's a lot of cities that have in their codes, a code of ethics for both council members and staff.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Our councilmember Henderson.
Just as a note, MSRC has a whole library of code of ethics for various cities in Washington and some even in Oregon. So, so an excellent place to poke around.
We love MRSC. We use them all the time. They are awesome.
All right. Well, I don't see any issue with the recommendations that councilmember has that we can provide some language in there. The only, the only one I will mention is the providing presentations. I think that needs to be fairly soft because we sometimes get those from people that we don't really have any control over. So we don't want to be mandating things that we can't enforce, but we can, we can put some language in there that council.
But we certainly could say any staff PowerPoint presentations will be provided to the council no later than the morning of the council meeting.
Yeah. And can we not ask those folks who are making the presentation to provide it?
Yes, absolutely. People who are making presentations, outside groups that come in and say, hey, we want to tell you about this fabulous program we have. Yes, we can ask them for it, but as Josh says, we don't have any control over them. And sometimes they do get it to Josh at four thirty five before the council meeting, but we do have control over staff and we do have control over the, the consultants that we have hired. For example, the gentleman that gave the presentation today on the UGA.
Yeah, well.
They easily could have said, we need that PowerPoint presentation to email the council by close of work on Wednesday.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. So just circling back to the direction we got before about creating a, the ad hoc or rotating council committees for appointments. We do have a number of vacancies currently and we have applicants to fill vacancies on Parks Commission, Arts Commission and Design Review Board. So the way we are currently operating under the existing code, which says that those committees have to be interviewed by the Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee. So at this time, and since we're going to continue with having council members do these interviews, we could get some nominations or some kind of appointment direction for those.
Yeah.
For the Board and Candidate Review Committee.
The first three to raise your hand gets to be.
Let's get some people.
Teasing on that.
Look, Rodenberg and Henderson. So I will schedule some interviews with those three. We're probably looking at multiple meetings because we have a lot of vacancies right now. And we will get that ball rolling.
My wife's going to kill me.
Two o'clock, three o'clock in the afternoon. Is that good for you three? All right. I, I will check in with you to make sure we get some good times. Councilmember Lykins.
Yeah, just a brief comment. When I was going through the, the guidelines, in Robert's Rules, they have the good of the order. And I would love to see us at some point put the good of the order. Just a place where we can shout out to amazing citizen action, amazing staff action, you know, awards received by, you know, the wastewater treatment. And we do appreciate those, but it might just be nice to add that little potential for people to give praise. It would be good in the meeting.
There's generally a spot at the end of the meeting for council comments. That's what we've been doing that.
Yeah, we've been, we've been doing that as well at the administrators, administrators report or mayor's report.
Okay, okay. All right, great.
All right. Well, that, that's all I have. We will, I will get my head together with Tony and, and the mayor and we'll hammer out some of the details of this and we'll come back to you with some proposals.
Great. Well, thank you, council, so much. I know we went a little bit over, but I think that was really important discussion. And we'll look forward to talking about this again soon. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, motion passes adjourned. Thank you all so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.